Good afternoon. Want to call to order the June 15th, 2022 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Again, welcome all who are in chambers to join with us this afternoon and also those that are joining us remotely via the broadcast. And as we get started, would just note that we've summarized over from yesterday's agenda and Clerk has very capably worked those into the agenda. And we had a closed session prior to this, and so we had a bit of a late start, but we'll, once we get into it, we'll get rolling here. So Flo, I'll turn to you to make the announcements. So call to roll, establish a quorum, please.
Absolutely. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, June 19th at 8:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed toward any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for off-agenda matters, and when the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. To make a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk staff or assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or you can send an email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Great, thank you Flo. Today, I'm going to do something a little unusual. I'm going to ask one of our audience members to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I've talked to him previously, and I asked Dan Aderhold to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dan, if you would, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. Clerk, we have the items to continue. Otherwise, I know we can go to our off-agenda. I think we have some, I know we have some folks in chambers, but we may have some folks on the phone as well, so.
Okay, yes. And you did make a note that, about the continued items, and I'll just call them out. It was Item 6, 7, and 8. Those were continued from June 14th to today. We also have one consent and two received and filed off-agenda items for your consideration. Pursuant to Government Code 54954.2B, there is a need to take immediate action on an item, and the need for action came to the attention of the Sacramento County subsequent to the posting of the agenda. Please first determine the necessity to hear the item before you take action on the matter by consideration to take action or, I'm sorry, I'm getting confused with what I wrote. So let's determine the necessity to hear the item first, and then I'll need a motion to at least adopt the consent item.
Okay, so we have the three items, as noted, off-agenda and two additional items. Do we have a motion to hear the items? Chair, move.
Second.
Okay, moving second and then necessity here, please vote.
Thank you. Unanimous vote.
All right, then you'll read those items in the record, please.
Yes, I will. I will, I'm asking for a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings pursuant to Ralph M. Brown Act. I understand that the Board adopted this on June 7th. We have a small gap. You are going to be on a three-week recess, and so there's a small gap, and we need to continue with our boards and commissions so that they could do virtual meetings.
Okay. Do we have a motion on that item?
So move.
Okay, can I move in second? Any public comment on this item?
No.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right.
The other two items, I'll just read into the record. These are received and filed, so no action is required. We have Supervisor Patrick Kennedy of the Second Supervisory District traveled to Orange County, California on May 31, 2022, for the Sacramento County Be Well Campus Trip. Also Supervisor Rich Desmond of the Third Supervisory District traveled to Orange County, May 31, 2022, for the County of Sacramento Be Well Campus Trip. And that concludes my notes for today.
Okay, we have those two items. We just need a motion on those two items to receive and file. Or no, you don't?
No, you don't need a motion. You're good on this one. And then I will note, too, that we do not have any public comment speakers in the queue on the phone.
Okay, as of yet.
As of yet.
Okay, so, all right. With that, then, we'll go to a time for items that are not on the agenda. We do have some speakers here in the audience today, so I'm going to call those forward. And we'll start with Dan Aderhold, followed by Dale Shook, followed by Tommy McKinney. Maybe you're all going to come forward at one time, so I can call you at once if you'd like, so. And John Fekner, Dorothy Richards, and Alexis Fonseca. And welcome. So, Dan, did everybody intend to, Speaker, you just have them here as a show of support? And if not, I'll give you a couple extra minutes if you'd like to?
They have something they want to say.
Oh, they do? Okay, good. So, all right, so, all right. Very good.
My River Homeless Crew here are the originals. They're the ones that they claimed for 10 years almost with the American River Homeless Crew. This is Dale Shook, Alexis, Rosa, Roddy, right? Yeah, Rosie, sorry. And Raymond.
Okay, well, welcome. Appreciate having you here. Thank you for all your good work.
These are the men, these are the men here that totally love the hell out of you guys. And I'll be honest about that.
Men and women.
Huh?
You're men and, men and women. You said the men. There are men and women.
Well, anyways, we totally appreciate all your support you guys have been giving us all these years, okay? And we're here today because we ever thought that they were being forced to move out today, okay? We thought the orders going to go after us, and before my micro homes got homes and we talked down. And I'm happy to figure that you guys are not around that my micro homes crew have homes, but also we all was strongly would like you guys to have some type of ordinance, you guys. They were, they have homes, but their dogs like with Section 8 or something for micro homes crews out here, because they all have dogs, and that is their family. We do not want them to be put to sleep. The shelters are flooded. There is no room for these animals, and none of the homes deserve their animals to be taken and killed. That is their family, us, who has been keeping them alive and safe all these years. So I'm hoping we can find a way around this. Even with those in shelters, they deserve to have a place for their animals as well. So I'm hoping you guys can come up with a way with that. But you, Phil Serna, brother, I thank you personally from all my heart for being all your support all these years, man. You have been there, you have gave us, you got me, us and Parker Rec working together. And I thought that was never going to happen. I mean, I mean honest with you, you got that going on, Phil Serna. You got us trash bags when we had no trash bags. You have been there for us, and we want to thank you for that. You've done something nobody's done. You have backed us and you bleeding us.
The whole Board has, Dan.
Exactly. But you have been there, Phil Serna. Don has been there. Even you, Des.
Even you, Rich.
You've got a new nickname on here.
I had a pick on you, and man, Bruce has one, quick retirement, buddy. That's gotta be the record breaker there, man. I had to say that, sorry, Bruce. But we just want to thank you, and they all want to talk to you as well. So I'm going to end it right here with me talking. I want you guys to hear from them.
Okay, great. Good, thanks, Dan. Okay.
Hello, thank you very much for having me, and I'd like to say thank you very much as well. And, you know, it's a unfortunate situation for me to be homeless right now, but I couldn't be homeless in a better place, really. You know, American River is a beautiful spot, and since I've been there, I've been, you know, being very appreciative of the stay there, so I keep my area clean and everything. And I've been doing that for quite a long time. Dan, I met up with him, and we just started cleaning up together, but I was just doing that just because I was just thankful of, you know, at least had like a tin over my head, you know, instead of just being out in the street. And then being off the street, you know, being by the river where you don't, you know, I'm not really out in the public eye or anything, but, you know, until they come out, you know, you gotta come out and enjoy yourself. But and the American River is a beautiful place to enjoy yourself at, too. So I just wanted to say thank you very much, guys, and, you know, I just hope that we can work a solution out that don't have us back, you know, like chasing us around the city, you know? You know, out of this area and then into this area. No, man, you know, we need to get a really good solution on this right here. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for your work as well.
Hi, my name is John Fekner. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, John.
It's a shame that we have the people that would want to remove us, because we do remove a lot of debris, and debris that most people don't like. The beach is down on the water where the geese are at constantly. I moved a lot of debris from where I'm at, and even after I'm done working, I go out during the evening and I clean up areas, and I present a place where they see it's clean, but they don't know who did it. So it gives them a little initiation. It's a little like that little discipline thing, you know? And they pour, they start cleaning up. Now, we can't be responsible for everybody out there, but we do clean up after them and when they move, and whenever we remove them as much as we can. We don't like people out here to destroy our land. I was born and raised in Sacramento, Cali, and my grandfather was a great man here. He was one of the biggest concrete contractors. He had Maubel. He saved people with the West Sacramento flood with his amphibious Jeep. When he came over here, he lived in an armed surplus tent just across the river. He wound up owning 14 houses and wanted to put a lot of people to work, did a lot of changing. I have a lot of ancestry that's helped a lot of people. And, well, to be honest with you, I don't, I wouldn't want to know where to go right now. I got got there by chance. I didn't sign up for it, but I was in the Step Forward Program. They had a bunch of kids running it. They put me out and put me there. But everything happens for a reason. And I feel that people need to take a note that people are out there trying to do their best they can, trying to survive. This is we the people, doesn't mean we the people have a house. We the people who have money. I've been monuments all over the United States of America. I built the first round fish ponds, first concrete skate structure, Boca Raton. I've worked all over a number of things, but one size does not fit all. When somebody goes crazy and they start a fire, like what happened the other morning, I didn't even know it happened. I don't even know the person. But then we put that and say, okay, you're all in that circle. No, no, we're not. I've worked all my life. I had open-heart surgery just over a year and a half ago, and I'm out here doing my part. I think we need some type of caretaker, like you have in the mountains. And that's what we kind of are, kind of caretakers. We keep, keep, keep this clean. I walk around at night, and I pick things up. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Alexis.
Hi.
I'm Alexis Fonseca. I just wanted to say I'm kind of new to the whole river thing, but I actually wouldn't want to go anywhere else until, you know, find a permanent home for myself. I do have an animal, and I was, I was really hurt by what everyone was saying about, you know, putting them down because there was no place for them in shelters or anything. And, you know, right now, she's the only thing that kind of gets me going, you know, to wake up and take care of her and, you know, understand that, you know what, we're going to get through this, and we're going to do it together. So that's kind of it.
Thank you, Alexis. Thank you, Alexis.
My name is Rosanna Williams. And it's hard for us out there, but we do what we can so that we can stay out there. We don't want to lose our animals. We love them, they're like our children. So we will continue to do what we can to help you like you help us. Thank you.
I'm just curious, I want to hear from the other speaker, but so is, it sounds like for at least a couple of you that if there were some housing alternatives that allowed you to retain your pet, obviously, that would at least be a step in the right direction. Have you been, any of you been contacted by some of our navigators to talk about how, again, to accommodate, certainly, you know, some, you know, the animal is very important in your life, obviously, and, you know, part of what motivates you beyond, obviously, the desire to, you know, try to, you know, better the situation? So I guess I'm just curious, as, you know, we want to hear from other speaker, but Dan, you want to respond?
I could respond to that, because she's upset. We have talked to Sheriff's Navigators, we have talked to Hope, we have talked to numerous people through the years, like a revolving door. It's always, they can't take their dog. There is no place for them to bring their dog. And one time, there was a place at Triad Shelter, and that got turned into a wheat factory after, it was built shortly after. But anyways, you know, it's, it's a shame, because like I told you earlier, Don, S H R A is willing to jump in and get homes, low-income housing with animals for the homeless with pets. They're willing to do that with you guys. They're, they're on, they're ready. And I think that would be a real good play all the way for helping people have the low-income housing built, because you know, like you said, Don, not many people are taking vouchers, but, you know, you got buildings being built right now. So why can't they use those? You know? Anyways, I just want to say, I want, I want.
Yeah. Yeah, I was in the queue here. So I, too, wanted to acknowledge the fact that, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like as much as you may appreciate living in a beautiful setting, I think we'd all love to live on the American River, because it is, it's a unique part of the United States, not just a region. But as you, I think we all know, it's for all of us, and it's not, it's not designed for people to live on. And in fact, it can be very dangerous, as you probably know better than any of the five of us, whether it's, you know, wildfires in the summer, or potential flooding in the winter, or just the being exposed to the elements, not to mention the fact that there are some bad actors, as you're probably all too aware, that can be violent at times. So I would, I would just hope you have some very attentive people in this room right now, not just the five of us, but our very capable staff that are hearing what you're saying. And so I, hold on, let me finish my thought, please. So I would, I would sincerely hope that as much as you may enjoy the scenery and the camaraderie of living in a beautiful place, that's human nature, it's understandable. But I would hope that you would take advantage of any and all assistance that is extended your way, and we're taking mental notes, too. We hear you loud and clear how important your beloved dogs are. I'm a dog lover, too. I miss my Sadie. She's been gone for, you know, 11 years now. And, you know, loved her like, you know, one of my own, and so I get that, I understand it, and I sympathize. But, you know, we're responsible for you and your welfare and your health. That's our job, is to look out for the people that we represent. It makes no difference what your wealth is, makes no difference what station in life you come from. We look at you the same as anyone else. We have a responsibility to you. So I would, again, just encourage you, take advantage of the moment, the audience that you have, and if there's a way we can accommodate both you and your beloved pets, we will bend over backwards to make it happen. We don't want to see the Parkway destroyed, because, again, it's not designed for people to live on, as much as you don't want to see it destroyed, because it is a beautiful public asset, not a private asset. So I just wanted to extend those thoughts following those that were shared by Chair Natoli, because I think this is an important moment for us as well as you. Thanks.
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
Phil Serna, you know as well as I do that the American River Parkway didn't used to be beautiful, and that's why foreign American River Homeless Crew, because Park Recreation had no money to clean it, and it was all, it was like maybe six to 10 feet high of trash from the bicycle path all the way into the water, all the way down to Old Sacramento, on both sides, darn highway and Richard Boulevard side. Me and my micro home screws changed that. We cleaned the heck out of it every day and made it back into the beautiful place I thought it would be. I never got to see it be this beautiful. My wood here was already thrashed, and we cleaned and saved it, and it's a beautiful place now, and we're fighting to keep it just as much as you guys are, the beautiful. And none of my micro home screws, I want to make this clear right here, none of my micro home screws want to live on the American River Parkway. They want to leave, but they want to leave with their animals, not, they get to be taken away from their animals. They want to be in a home, not a shelter.
We hear that.
And, and my crew members right here, right now, can tell you about the bottom of the heart, they all love you guys for what you guys have done for us. And we, and that's why we took it so to the heart yesterday, and we thought we got blindsided by the Still Creek, Still Creek pictures, because we're the ones that were cleaning that Still Creek, that was born and bred years ago, and we're taking 15 to 20 tons of trash out a day out of that thing. What you guys saw was pixie plainland compared to what it looked like. That place was a disaster. We took 50 drum barrels, we had nine 50 drum barrels of needles we took out of that part, out of that area of Still Creek. So we sympathize with you guys. We hate hoarders. We want nothing to do with them. And matter of fact, you guys can't go on homeless camps to remove these hoarding trash, we do. We don't have to abide by the laws you guys have to. We go in, we see a messy camp, we get on a case. If they don't clean it, we clean it for them. We don't put up with that. And, Rich Desmond, your area is next. Coming for you. We've been told, we're coming to you next, because we just got to doing the Parkway. We're just finishing up, Friday here, we're having the May cleaning event. You guys, welcome to come down, please come down, you guys, Friday. We're going to be cleaning from 8:00 in the morning until 1:00 in the afternoon. Watch the finishing job of the Parkway, you guys, and go look at our beautiful beach, Discovery Park, our beautiful beach. We're keeping it beautiful every day, because we're fighting to keep it clean every day. We make sure, we haven't found tires, you name it. God, anything under the kitchen, Stinks been throwing that thing around River Park right there, and irritates the hell out of me, because worst-case scenario is a kid getting hurt. That is the worst-case scenario, or stepping on a needle for crying out loud, like I told Don. We're fighting to keep that from ever happening on the Parkway. That's why I told you, I guarantee you, there is no needles on the Parkway, not, my crews around there won't be. We keep it clean and safe out there all the time for you guys, and we don't want nothing to happen. And, Phil Serna, we're ready to move, buddy. My crews are ready to move, but there are, but they are going to still be American River Homeless Crews, they're still going to keep coming back to the American River Parkway, even when you guys give them homes. We all talked about this, we're a family, we can be as one. And they'll all tell you, we love each other, and we watch over each other like a hawk. And you talk about the crime there? There is no crime. Kennedy? You kind of irritated me yesterday, it irritated me with that one, because there is no crime on the Parkway, buddy. I'll reiterate that with you one more time, there's no more crime on the Parkway where we live, but now you talk about Ranch Cordova, all that area? Yeah.
Now, 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 Dan.
Talk about American Parkway, you know, there is no crime, buddy. We guarantee that, because that's all of us here.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Listen to Georgia just talk here. Okay, go ahead, Dan.
I've been Parkway for a minute, not as long as some of these other people, but long enough, and my animals and my family, one of them was abandoned on Parkway, she's five months old, and if I had found her, she would have died. And it's just like children, they want to be with their parents, the animals want to be with their parents, with their parents. And to separate us from our animals and put us in a shelter and put them in a, the pound and or, and kill them, euthanize them, no, that's not going to happen, because they are my family. No one is going to take them. And I am all they know, and that's not happening, sir. And I keep my area clean, I help with other areas, we all work together to keep that place clean. And you can't control what someone else does, whether they want to be a pig or not, but I don't tolerate pits, because anyone that knows me knows I will go get your stuff and take you to the street. Oh, well, you should have picked it up. You know, I don't put up with pits. I was raised that way, I live that way. I'm not out there because I want to be out there. I lost my job because I worked for a company that didn't give a crap, and I'm just a direct person.
Yep.
And to take my animals is cruel to them, and that's the only home they've known.
Do you have a couple of, do you have dogs? Is that what you have? You said, I didn't hear, you said you have puppies?
I have dogs, sir, yes. And they are my children, and I'm literally all they've known since they were puppies. And that's not fair, that, that's, they're my life. I mean, I get up, I'll take care of them, they're what keep me going every day, because I know that I've got to take care of them, and they take care of me in return.
Yeah, Mr. Sir.
And we want a shelter, we want a shelter, we want a home for us and our pets.
Okay. Thanks, Jordy.
Thank you, and thank you all for, thank you all for your words, Dan. We do have a really full agenda here today, so I know we have to get to the business at hand, but you heard me say yesterday, you know, our offices provided a little bit of help for you in the past based on what you've requested, in terms of materials that you need, tools, bags, whatever, whatever it is. So that offer stands. You just need to communicate with my office to make sure we understand what it is you need, and we'll get it to you. Dan, we're not going to do it here, so I don't want to get back and forth.
I know that.
Yeah. But, because we do have a lot, a lot to do this afternoon, but I just want to make sure you understand that that offer is open, because you do great work. We all appreciate the fact that you appreciate the Parkway as much, if not more than, than the rest of us. So we want to make sure that you have what you need to continue doing the great work that you do.
It's paradise to us.
Did you want to add something, sir? Okay, real quick, Dan.
Can I just add one thing really quick, Don?
Yeah, very quick, yeah.
One thing really quick. One thing we definitely need more than anything right now, you guys, I wish I was going to talk about, I was going to send you an email, but one thing we need more than anything right now is water. Water and a porta potty. There is no porta potty on the Parkway on Richard Boulevard side, none, zilch. Somebody in a white truck stole it. Anyways, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to mention that, so you talk about cleaning up the Parkway, we clean up a lot of stuff that people don't see, and talk about saving the Parkway and making an impact, that's what we do. We clean up a lot of things that people don't see, that's underneath the dirt, underneath the plants grow. I'm 62 years old, and I pay very close attention. I used, I lived up in West Sacramento, I used to come all the way over here, I used to fish on the riverbank, we used to have bonfire fish, you know, and now you can't do that anymore, but we clean a lot, and therefore, I think we do a little bit better job than what's visualized.
Okay. Well, we thank, thank all of you, and I guess I would just add to what Supervisor Serna Well, we thank, thank all of you, and I guess I would just add to what Supervisor Cernah said, that, um, one, I, I heard with great sincerity, your interest, obviously, certainly, um, in, in, in what you do every day to, to help make the, you know, Parkway a cleaner place. Uh, but you're also interested in having permanent, permanent housing, and you want to be able to bring your pets, uh, with you. And, uh, if that's, you know, the barrier, then I, I, I would just say that I think it's incumbent upon us to figure that out. And I know we, and again, I would just look to Ann here for just a moment, but, you know, uh, I think we recognize that, you know, the, the pets, sometimes partners, they use the three Ps, the possessions, but certainly the pets. Um, and again, I think everyone up here is a, you know, a pet lover, probably a pet owner, and, uh, they're important to us. So, you know, wherever you are in your lives, they're, they're support, and, uh, they're tremendously loyal, and, uh, they're always there. And, uh, so, you know, if as a part of our consideration, as we're looking to try to help you and others, um, you know, I would even go as far as suggest that we have a policy by this board that if we help relocate folks, that their pets will not be destroyed or killed, uh, that we just take it right up front, uh, that, you know, we make every effort to find another home or to have those pets stay with them, uh, in a situation. Because I think that if, you know, i- if that's the barrier to folks, like we've heard here from today, uh, for them to, um, accept an offer, or at least consider an offer of housing, something that would meet their needs, but also that of, um, you know, uh, their, their pets, uh, then, then I think that's what we need to, to, not just strive for. We had to, we had to make it, make it clear. So there's no fear about somebody taking their pet and killing it. I mean, I, I know Claudia spoke to that yesterday, certainly several of you spoke to that, that what you heard yesterday, somehow you derived that we were going to force people off the Parkway and take your pets and euthanize them, kill them. That's the farthest thing from anything we were talking about, but I just, and you might be able to offer some reassurance. I would turn to you for a moment here, so.
Yeah, I do want to reiterate what you just said, Supervisor Nattoli, that it's never our intention to take someone's pet away and euthanize it. That is like, I can't even imagine that, I.
Yeah.
But, but even more so, I mean, the, the safe stay paradigm that we've now embarked, uh, by design, uh, the way I understand it, um, not just for the first, but for all safe stays in the future, is going to have a kennel component to it, is it not?
Yes, so everything we're working on right now that's new, um, we are taking the importance of pets into consideration so that when folks do come, uh, that you can come with your pets. We know how important that is. We know that very often your pets are, um, the only thing, as you said, they keep you going, and it's your companion. And we absolutely understand the importance of that and are doing everything we can to ensure that if we do find, um, either a shelter or a permanent home, that you're able to take your pets.
And, and I would just say, we, we don't want to break up the crew because obviously you've got a good working relationship, but if we could find you all housing this very afternoon for you and your pets, I think it'd be the greatest thing we could achieve. So, me and a whole lot of other folks. So, again, I heard your commitment that much to love living and working out in the Parkway, that I, to, to every person, I heard that you were certainly willing to accept housing, obviously, um, with, with some caveats. And again, I think that's what we need to keep working on, as Ann said. So, anyway, thank you for what you do. Thanks for being here. Lisa's cooler inside than it is outside. Working in the Parkway today, so you got a good spot to be. But we, uh, we welcome you, and, uh, we thank you for your efforts, and, uh, we've got folks here in the audience. Hopefully, Dan, we've got, I have the sign in sheets, but ways to reach you because I think, uh, you've all made some pretty, uh, powerful comments here today. We certainly take them to heart. We thank you, but also we want to help you. And again, we don't want to break the crew up, but if we could find you all housing this afternoon, um, you'd have to come back in another capacity. But I'm sure you would, because it sounds like you're very committed to what you do. So, anyway, thank.
And that, and I look forward to issuing the proclamation. I know we have something on the calendar, uh, to express our appreciation more formally. So you'll, you'll be, uh, seeing that soon.
Act surprised.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dan. And thanks to each and every one of you, you take care of them.
No, that's clear, thank you.
That's good, we know, you're committed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Very quickly, Dan, we got a very full agenda.
Here's the lady from Discovery Park that's been keeping your guys' beaches clean.
Okay.
Her name's Elizabeth.
Hi, Elizabeth. Well, welcome, we just heard from the rest of the crew, so you're, 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 you're batting cleanup here now, so go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, hi, how you guys doing?
I know, you just walked in, so. Welcome, good afternoon, and, uh, you don't.
I, I, I guess I've been, I, I really don't know. I mean, I help clean up, I guess, every day. I, um, I. Yes, I just walked in, I really don't.
Well, we, we thank you for your, your, your efforts.
I don't mind doing it. I've been living there for like five years, well, I know you're not supposed to live there, but I've been there for like five years. And I know it gets like, for all the homeless, there are a lot of people out there who just don't give, don't care about the river or don't care where they sleep. I do. I, I, I like to keep my camp clean. I have, I have, I have a lot of dogs, so, and the rangers and the dogs, it, it gets kind of, uh, so just cleaning up, just keeping it clean makes the rangers like not be all weird, and then you guys won't be all weird on us, so, I don't know.
Well, what I think you may have missed, because you, you came, uh, later, Liz, is the fact that, uh, you know, our, uh, with our appreciation for, for what you do in terms of keeping the Parkway clean, we certainly want to make sure that everyone understands our intent is to make sure you don't feel like you have to live on the Parkway, either because it's, you know, you feel like you don't have a place for your pets, or, or for other reasons. Uh, everyone deserves, uh, shelter, and everyone deserves the services that, um, they need, you know, despite, uh, people's, um, place in life. So, um, want to make sure that you didn't lose that message because the others heard it earlier. But, um, as the chair mentioned, uh, as you were walking in, you know, if, uh, if we can help you get out of the circumstance of being homeless on the, on the Parkway as soon as today, we want to make every effort to see that happen.
Even, even if you guys do make it so I can get out of the Parkway, I would still, I think, help clean up.
We heard that too, that's clear, yeah.
I would still do that, because I, I love doing it. I love, I love helping people, I like helping the river, I like, I mean, it's, it just makes the park look better, just all the way around.
And thank you for that, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And we have contact information for some of the folks, Dan, but if, if our folks wanted to follow up with any, we certainly have yours, but any of your crew trying to assist with the housing, uh, we got a couple of phone numbers here so we can follow up with you. So, again, thank you all for making the effort. You guys be safe out there and take care. And we hope to find you housing soon, so.
Thank you all.
Thank you, okay.
We have one caller.
Oh, we have, and we have a caller, so, um, thanks again. So we have one off agenda caller.
Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, supervisors. This is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I'm a licensed psychologist in private practice. I'm a community mental health advocate. I am a member of the Sacramento County Mental Health Board, and I am calling in today, well, I'm a resident of Supervisor Two. Um, and I'm calling in today as my role of president of the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association. I wanted to let you and the rest of the Sacramento community know about a really exciting event that the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association is going to be hosting for our community. The world's hurting. Rates of depression and anxiety have been skyrocketing even before the pandemic, especially among young people. We could all use more joy now more than ever. We need to cultivate joy in our community through connection. And the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association, with the help of Wealth Based Health, Supervisor Kennedy, and City Councilmember Katie Valenzuela, plan to do just that. As a gift to our community, Sacramento Valley Psychological Association invites everyone to be our guest on Friday, June 24th, at six o'clock at the Guild Theater for a screening of Mission Joy: Finding Happiness in Troubled Times. In this 90-minute documentary, we learn about the importance of cultivating a practice of joy for mental wellness. This is told through the friendship and spirit of the Dalai Lama and Archbishop Desmond Tutu. In their final joint mission, these self-described machiavellus brothers give a master class in how to create joy in a world that was never easy for them. They offer neuroscience-backed wisdom to help each of us live with more joy despite circumstances. And following the screening, there'll be an opportunity to participate in a moderated discussion with Dr. Christy Higgins, Dr. Jonathan Portius, and myself. Sacramento Valley Psychological Association offers this gift to our community in order to promote mental wellness during such stressful times. I'd like to extend invitations to each one of you supervisors, as well as to whoever might be listening. You can go to sacramentovalleypsychologist.com to register for the event. You know, we're all hurting. I know especially, you guys have been having some really difficult conversations and deliberations here. We're all trying to do the best we can in navigating these unprecedented times. And so Sacramento Valley Psychological Association is just wanting to give this gift to our community. Please know that you are seen and appreciated, and a big, big thank you to Supervisor Kennedy to help financially support this endeavor. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Corinne. More joy is a good thing, so we certainly appreciate the invitation. Thank you to our colleague, and I know that, uh, I, I think we've all received a written invitation as well. So, thank you so much, thank you to the association, and, uh, hopefully, a lot of folks will partake of the opportunity to, uh, learn more about, uh, how we can all, um, get better together. So, thanks, Corinne. Okay.
Okay, and that looks like that, uh, she was the only caller.
All right. Very good. So that concludes our off agenda items. I had no one else in the chambers on off agenda, so that'll take us into our regular agenda. And with that, if you'll call the first item, please.
Okay, item number two is the George Hills Annual Report.
Okay, I think Lisa's going to kick this off, and then Randy's going to come down. Wait, Lisa.
Right, so today your board will be hearing, um, from Randy Rendig of George Hills Company for the George Hills Annual Report. As you know, um, George Hills serves as the Contract Claims Administrator for handling all defense liability claims against the county. Um, its contract requires that it give an annual report to the board, so that is what is happening here today. And I'll turn it over to Randy.
Great, thanks, Lisa. Randy, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Chairperson Nattoli, members of the board. Start off with some, this is going to be a good report. Risk management had a very good year in 2021. Start with something that I normally don't start with, and that is, uh, the subrogation program that, uh, the county in George Hills has. Last year, um, we returned to the county about 300, uh, a little less than $300,000, uh, if my math is right. Last fiscal year, um, we returned $760,000. And it cost, um, the county $45,590 to recover that $760,000. So, sometimes when you collect money, it's like, okay, but how much did it cost to get it? Um, we think that's a pretty good re- return on, on investment, if you will, for, um, returning money to the county.
And Randy, that was recovered how?
I'm sorry?
And how was that, how was that money recovered, then?
Those, those are all cases where an individual, either individually.
Yeah.
Or through their insurance company has damaged county property. And our subrogation team then goes out and, uh, collects the money from an individual, uh, who either pays on a monthly basis until they pay it back, or we work out some kind of deal with them, the insurance carriers. Um, so it's, it's a, we've got a team of two people that do that full-time. And, um, as I say, I think they've, uh, they've demonstrated that.
So is that largely auto accidents where somebody runs into a facility of some sort?
Facility, it could be any kind of property that's damaged, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. So, I've got a couple of slides as usual.
Sure.
Are they on the?
We'll get them up here in just a second. There we go.
There we go. So this is a slide, these slides you've seen before, many years, for those of you that have been here. You'll notice a pattern here, and that's, uh, over the last three fiscal years, um, our claims administration fees have gone down. It's, it's interesting because the amount of dollars spent went down, but the amount, the percentage of the total amount of the program itself went up. Now, again, we're not talking dramatic amounts, 2%, 4%, 7%. But, um, you know, we think we're getting a good bang, we're giving you a good bang for the buck in terms of the, the, um, services that we perform to handle these claims. Um, attorney's fees and costs, same thing. Um, $5.7 million three years ago, uh, $4.2 million. It's 44% of the overall program. Uh, claim payments, notice the last three years, 15 million, 30 million, almost 31 million, and then 4.6 million. And we've talked about it before, shock losses are what cause those big numbers. Uh, and we have seen a dramatic decrease in those shock losses. I can tell you that next year, that 4.6 number is going to be a little bit higher, but it's going to be nowhere near the two previous years. Um, and miscellaneous costs and fees, that's for auto appraisals, that sort of thing. So, the, um, total cost, again, is 100%, but a significant reduction in the overall cost, um, last year. So that's the, how the individual items break down to create the total. These are increases or decreases. And again, as you will see, um, administration fees, down 10% from the previous year. Attorney fees and costs, and these are all attorney's fees and costs. There's going to be a separate slide for the panel, the four panel firms, but $4.2 million, 4.757. So costs are going down. Claims are going down. So there is a, and you'll see that in a moment, there is a reason why these things are happening. Claim payments, 15 million, 30 million, down to 4.6 million. 85% decrease, that's a pretty healthy decrease. Again, miscellaneous fees and costs, small number, whole thing down 74%. The assignments for the three, excuse me, the four panel firms we have, uh, again, these are distributed. We try and distribute these as evenly as we can. Um, some firms are bigger than others, some have certain expertise that others don't. Uh, and so, uh, the bottom three firms are, you know, similar in nature. Evans, Wykaskin, Ward, they handle most of our auto cases and other type of, um, bodily injury cases. As you will see in the past, they kind of led the pack. There just weren't that many in this last fiscal year, which is why their number was down. So, again, there's, there's different factors that go into how we assign them, but we do try and keep it as much of a level playing field as we can. Here's the amount, uh, that we paid them for the last fiscal year. Again, a significant drop from 1819 to 1920 to 2021. So the total amount that I previously showed you for the total amount of the attorney's fees and costs was, uh, 4.236 million. Of that, 3.2 million was to the four firms. The reason there's a difference, um, there are conflicts that develop that we can't use our four panel firms for. There may be cases where the county sued, individual employees are sued, there's a conflict because of the way the situation or the accident occurred, so we have to hire separate lawyers to represent the counties, as, represent the individuals as opposed to the county, so that's why there's this difference. Lawsuits closed. I remember last year saying that we will never see a 75, 72% uh, closed without payment again. I think I also said it was usually around 50, 55% in terms of where that number comes in. So we fell back in line, um, this last fiscal year, 53%. There was no payment made, uh, on these litigated files. How they break out in terms of, uh, it's changed a little bit. Sheriff is, and has been for quite a number of years. I know Supervisor Cernah and I talked about that last year. But sometimes the other three categories change. The miscellaneous, um, that's three lawsuits or less. Non-jurisdictional, non-jurisdictional is the county gets sued and the county didn't have anything to do with the loss. It happened in the city of Sac, but they sued the county anyway. Those type of situations where they just got the wrong folks. And typically what happens when they do that is rather than us sending them out to lawyers, the adjuster that's handling the case will call plaintiff's counsel and say, hey, listen, you got the wrong folks. How about you give us a dismissal? We'll give you a declaration saying it ate us from the person most knowledgeable with the county. Works probably 50% of the time to where we don't have to get outside counsel involved. Another 25% of the time, uh, they won't do it. We've got to send it to outside counsel. They'll pick up the phone, they'll call plaintiff's counsel, and they'll go, okay, okay, get us the declaration, we'll let you go. And the other 25%, roughly, we do have to hire, we've hired the lawyers, now they have to do some discovery, and they want to lock down either through depositions or some other means to make sure that the county isn't involved. So there is a, a good savings on not sending them all out to outside counsel every time. Yes?
Desmond, yeah, Supervisor Cernah.
Thank you. Um, while I appreciate that explanation, it, it raises other questions for me. It's a side of the, um, I guess, the art and science of settlement proceedings and the law that I didn't understand. So, to, to someone that may just be, uh, watching today and hearing what you just said about just the fact that the wrong party, that if I understand you correctly, the wrong party was identified, there seems to be, there, there's a, like a separate cottage industry around, um, just how you would let the other parties involved know it's the wrong party, and that can be as involved as having to pay attorney's fees and everything else that comes with just getting a declaration, um, exercised?
The best example, I'm not sure it's, it's that onerous of a process or that difficult of a process.
Well, that's my point.
Yeah, yeah. But, we have no control over the lawyers that do this. And so, for us to prevent that, um, there's no way we can prevent the filing of lawsuits because anybody, as you know, can sue for anything. And so, once they do that, um, they are sometimes protecting their, uh, practice by making sure that they, if they, uh, have a party in there that shouldn't be, or have a party in there that should be in there, but yet they dismiss them. There's remedies for that, but there's no point in then keeping, on the other hand, a party in there that shouldn't be in there because it's ultimately probably going to cost them more money, uh, because now we've got an extra set of lawyers in there on the defense side that are challenging this. It's just much cleaner for everybody if they get the parties, let the parties go that really should be in them in the first place.
Yeah, I get it.
I can weigh in a little bit.
Please.
It's, um, you're not always dealing with reasonable people. And also.
What?
I know, it's hard to believe. And also, that, you know, the lawyer has a duty to make sure that they're suing the right people and protecting their clients. So if they're not sure if it's on, you know, let's just use the example of Florin and Power Inn. If it's on one side of the, um, street, then it may be a county jurisdiction. If it's another, it might be in the city. I'm not sure if that's the right one, but you know what I mean? Fruit Ridge, I don't know. Anyway, um, and so they have to do discovery. Anyway, um, and so they have to do discovery to make sure that, that they're keeping in the correct party and dismissing the correct party, and that does sometimes take time. And so we may have hired an attorney to respond to that discovery, for instance. Or um, again, if you're not dealing with a reasonable attorney, they may try, be trying to complicate matters. Um, and so, you know, the county would have to fi- hire an attorney to then defend those types of cases as well.
So just for a non-lawyer, it sounds to me like it, it's a case of uh widened nets get cast, and then you have to kind of pay the price to free yourself.
Right, exactly.
Very true, and what we're seeing more and more often with these non-jurisdictional cases is the lawyers are from, we're seeing such an increase in Southern California lawyers practicing up here. And so when they see an accident in the city of Sacramento, they're going to sue the city, they're going to sue the county because they both say Sacramento, because they don't know and they're too lazy to look and see what's going on, frankly.
And I see that too, because I review all the claims every day. Yeah, I review all the claims every day, and I laugh when I see it's happening on, you know, Ninth and J. And they're suing this county of Sacramento. So hopefully, you know, again, that Randy and his folks can explain that to an attorney, and they will say, oh, yes, great. But that doesn't always happen that way.
Like I said, it's, it's, this is, this concept is something I was admittedly unaware of. It doesn't make me feel any better, but I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
I mean, quite honestly, I was, I had to ask Randy too, because I, I understand the concept, but I couldn't believe that it amounted to, what is it, 15% of the costs? I mean, that seemed crazy to me as well. So I acknowledge that.
Thanks.
Types of cases, um, other, other bodily injury would be everything other than auto. Slip and falls, um, excessive force cases, the run-of-the-mill other-than-auto cases, 35% of the total. And then the others are negligible. The one surprising thing about this is the other personal injury, which are the employment cases. Usually that number is quite a bit higher. So there's less of those being filed, um, which is, is a surprise to me, frankly.
Not to me, but.
We're getting better.
Well, and some of that, it should be able to, that for nearly two years, a lot of folks weren't even in the workplace. I mean, they were working, a lot of folks were, were, were working remotely. So you had less foot traffic, certainly from employee, but even from a customer service standpoint, you know, we've gotten better at some of those transactional things being done. So again, I, I would, but think that might prevent a little less exposure just because of, you know, if you're having less people in buildings and that type of thing over time. Yeah.
And quite frankly, Mr. Chair, I was laughing under my breath here just because I'd like to attribute some of this to just a better um brand of leadership at the top of our administration.
Well, sure, that probably goes without saying, yeah.
I would like to think we, we do things better, the county does things better, the training's better. Yes, there's less employees. I mean, it's, it's usually never one thing, of course, it's a myriad of things, so.
But we're better because we're doing better, so, okay, good, thanks.
And finally, uh, the total number of claims, um, you'll see a drop, again, not surprisingly with COVID. Uh, the number of new dropped again. I would expect probably that will continue for another year. Who knows how long it may continue, but I, I, I think something in the, you know, 525 to 575 range may be the, um, what we're going to see for the next couple of years. In your packet, but not, uh, there are no slides for the results of what the defense council did in terms of closing files last year. Those are in your actual report. Any questions?
All right, thanks, Randy. Any other questions by board members, uh, pretty concise report? All right, I don't see any additional questions. Anyone, any, I don't have anybody sign to speak, anybody on the phone on this?
No, we do not have any calls.
Okay. Well, Randy, we thank you for being, being here again, so.
You bet.
This will be, this will be the last time I'll be here to receive your reports, so next year.
What I understand.
And uh, but appreciate your work over the years.
It was going to be my last time too, but things have changed.
All right, see you on the other side.
Thanks, Randy.
Thanks, Randy. Okay.
Item three is the report on COVID-19 response.
All righty, Dr. Cassiri and Siobhan Cathari, I believe. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I guess Siobhan is going to help me from the distance.
Role reversal.
I'm Dr. Olivia Cassiri, uh, public health officer. I have actually two reports for you today, one on COVID-19 and another on monkeypox. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation, so hopefully uh I'll be able to um explain clearly the points that I want to put across. We did provide you with um summaries, and so I'll be highlighting some of that information and also providing a little bit more detail on monkeypox, since that's a new disease that we're dealing with right now. So for COVID-19, um, we are continuing to see a little bit of an increase. There are some early indications of a slowdown, both at the Sacramento County level as well as at the state level. But of course, we have to continue monitoring to see what's going to happen. So from the, um, the update from last week, uh, the case rate was at 37.3 per 100,000. We haven't gotten the update for today. I know we've received a few questions um from some members of the public that have been very closely following our dashboard because we uh put up information indicating that we were going to change the frequency at which we were updating some of the, uh, the tabs. So for the one that most people are interested in, which is the cases and deaths, we are going to continue updating that on a weekly basis. But some of the others, um, such as the demographics, healthcare, lab, vaccination, and um location, those will go to an update every other week. Because uh, right now, with the information that we have, we, people are, do know what the patterns are and what is happening. So we felt that being able to reduce the frequency will assist us in being able to free up our epidemiologists, who are now actually helping us with the monkeypox and also with other uh diseases that we have to follow, that we have actually had to put aside while we were working on COVID-19. So if there are any other questions, um, I think the most important one is the cases and deaths, and that will still continue on a weekly basis.
Okay, Dr. Cassiri, I have a question, but I think County Council punched that first solid.
Sure.
Sorry to interject, um, I, I didn't notice the materials until right now. This was noticed as a COVID-19 update. So out of an abundance of caution, I would advise that we don't receive an update on monkeypox because it wasn't properly noticed for that. If DHS has something that they'd like to share with the board, they could certainly do that in writing.
Or if a board member asks a question, they can respond generally.
Right, but again, carefully, yeah.
Okay.
Just out of an abundance of caution.
All right, so just cut your presentation in half, Dr. Cassiri.
I guess I'll just answer the questions.
And I apologize for, for um doing this, you know, in the middle of your presentation, but again, didn't realize that this was going to be discussed, so.
If I could just, on the COVID, because again, I, I actually had someone reach out to me yesterday afternoon late. I think they've been in communication, at least with some of your team, and they were seeking an explanation that you just offered, at least in brief here, relative to reporting data. This person outlined that um they've been tracking the information because of their own uh personal situation relates to, and, and they were relying on the data to, to, you know, inform them about um risk and just, you know, other community elements. This was supposed to be effective today, or it is effective today that you're changing the reporting frequency, is that?
Let me check.
The, the party wrote to us yesterday late and said that the change goes into effect tomorrow, which is today now, so.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so you're going to continue to report. Uh, the point that was made that there continues to be um some surging. And in light of that, uh, folks that are, you know, again, trying to, you know, guard against some of the risk elements, but also understand them. And I understand your point about the epidemiologists and, you know, what they're tasked with. Is there any other components as a part of that beyond the deaths and hospitalizations that would be of better assist? I don't know if it's the vaccination rates, if it's um cases in total report. I mean, I, again, I, again, just thinking about your dashboard and some of the things that are on there, recognizing that, you know, if it's going to be updated weekly, that there's a, there's a task involved in doing that, both assimilating information but also putting it in. Is there any other things, Dr. Cassiri, that, you know, we haven't responded, this just came in, and I, I, I don't know if your team has responded to this particular party yet. Maybe other supervisors have, have received some more communications, but this person happened to reside in El Grove and wrote to me as, as their supervisor, so.
Yes, we are going to respond. We got the email just before the meeting, so didn't have time to. But uh, back to, to your question, uh, the, the indicator that is changing the most right now is the cases and deaths, and that's why we're continuing that weekly. We also want to point out that for individuals that are using this to uh make decisions about risk, I think the most important thing is to remember that right now, yes, we are in a surge. So if you are going out in the public and you have a condition that puts you at risk, the most important thing you can do is make sure that you wear a mask and also make sure you're up to date on vaccinations. Um, and also be careful about which places you choose to go to. If it's a place that is, uh, tends to be crowded, you may need, uh, need to make a different decision about that or minimize the amount of time that you spend in crowded places.
Okay, so, and I, and you will be responding, Rodney, again, you, I'm sorry if you just got this. We didn't get it till late yesterday afternoon, and I, you know, I, it was just handed to me before I came down here today, so.
Absolutely.
All right, very good, I appreciate that, so. Lisa, do you have something else, County Council? Yeah, yeah, if you, okay. Uh, any other member of the board on the COVID update?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a, a few more points.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Under vaccination, again, I want to point out, this is a question that Supervisor Cerner had asked a couple of times about including more information on booster doses, which we have done. So when you look at that data, Sacramento County, it's about 71.6% of the total population has received at least one dose, 66 um fully vaccinated, and about 58.8% of those eligible for booster are actually, um, received their booster. So we are continuing to have our, our vaccination clinics, even though they are small, but uh there are people out there who are still interested in vaccinating, and so we are doing that.
Ms. Chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt. So when you say, when you gave the percentage for those that are eligible, that have received, uh, that have been boosted, that is first boost only?
Yes, this is for the first booster. It does not differentiate for those that get the second one, because the second one, it's only people 50 and over.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then lastly, just wanted to point out, um, with the jails, we have been doing really well until most recent couple of weeks, where we've seen an increase in the number of individuals testing positive. Most of these are actually people who are coming in and uh they're identified during the process that they have um for screening, um, right after someone is booked. And so we are working very closely with the health services for the jails to make sure that um they have all of the um, the, all that they need in terms of testing equipment, so that uh they're able to continue screening. And also, of course, they do have access to treatment as well for those that do meet the criteria. And with that, um, I guess I, I'll take more questions, or if you have any questions about monkeypox, I can take those as well.
Thanks. I just, there were some reports here uh in the last few weeks about expired uh test kits and expired vaccines. I believe both, I may be confusing that a bit, but um, is that becoming problematic because of either low participation at the vaccination clinics? Or, you know, do we, you know, certainly, um, the tests have a, you know, validation date or expiration date? I don't know if they actually become, you know, unreliable at that very day, but I'm just curious about that. And if so, from our perspective, again, some of that came to us obviously through state and federal sources, but we also, I don't think, I think we put dollars forth to acquire some of that, at least as part of our participation. So I'm curious, Dr. Cassiri, has, has that been an issue here, or is it more at a state or federal level?
It has not been a big issue, because we've tried to be real careful about how we handle um the test kits. We only um request from our allocation what we think we will need. We have had a few that reached the expiration, and then we have to uh go back to the state and federal government to give us guidance as to whether we are able to extend that expiration or if we have to get rid of them. Of course, for the vaccine, it's even tighter in terms of uh the regulations around um being able to use vaccine. You can't use it uh beyond the vaccine, the expiration date unless you have gotten an extension from the federal government. And we have a protocol for how to dispose of any uh expired vaccine, but we've not had a lot of that, because as I said, we've been tracking how much we've been, we're using.
Well, thank you for, for your, your prudence in, in doing that and, you know, making good use of the resources that are available to us, and certainly not coming up short, but also not overextending in a way that, and, you know, is, is potentially wasteful, I guess. So just, uh, again, and in a general sense, um, monkeypox uh has been reported. I think last I saw, five, five cases uh here in Sacramento County and maybe more. But um, just generally, are there any uh heightened risks related to exposures? It's been reported on that, you know, largely folks have traveled to locations where there's a, you know, some, some exposure to a more prevalent transmission, I guess. But um, so just, again, keeping with council's advice, maybe you could respond generally to that?
Sure. Yes, that's correct. We have five confirmed cases in Sacramento County. And um, the uh information that uh we're giving to the public is that the risk remains low. And reason for that is that we have been able to work very closely with the individuals that have been identified and have done uh contact tracing and been able to make sure that those that were close contacts are identified and get vaccination. The individual, five individuals also have received uh treatment. And so, and are doing well um at home, they're all at home, uh, nobody's been hospitalized. I do want to point out, though, that uh there are a couple of things that have helped us in this investigation, one of which is that uh public health lab is actually able to do the testing that is required. It's a PCR test that identifies the virus as an orthopox, and then we send it to CDC for um confirmation. Sacramento County is one of the few, has one of the few public health labs in California that is actually able to do this testing. And it helps us a lot in being able to uh get results, a quick turnaround on results. I also want to thank you all for the support you've given us with um the public health clinic. Usually the clinic sees uh TB and STD patients, but in situations like this, uh, we've actually been able to quickly schedule people to uh come in and get evaluated and tested, and also for vaccination as well. So I know that I've talked with several of you over the years about the importance of the clinic. And so again, wanted to thank you for that support. I also want to point out that um we do anticipate that there will be additional cases, not so much from this cluster, but because, of course, people continue to travel to areas that do have cases. And so we remain vigilant, we continue to work with um our healthcare providers, because usually that's the way that we first get notified about cases. So we have a very good network and communication and work very closely with them. And I also, again, want to thank um our staff who mobilized really quickly in being able to um take care of the situation and uh reprioritize. Some of them had to be reprioritized from COVID to uh help us. COVID to help us with the monkeypox outbreak.
But the pox is treatable? It's treatable as far as if someone contracts the disease?
So fortunately, one is that the disease that people are getting, the variant, I guess that is circulating, is mild. So the individuals so far have had mild disease, but of course, there's always a concern that there might be someone who gets severe disease. There is a treatment. The short name of it is T-Pox, and it's an antiviral, and we're very fortunate, again, to have collaboration with UC Davis that is able to work with us in making sure that the individuals identified get treated.
Okay, very good. Well, any other questions of Dr. K? All right.
And what I'll do is, whatever points I didn't cover for monkeypox, I will send a follow-up email to provide additional detail.
Thank you, Dr. Kasseri. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, anybody on the phone? All right, no callers, and no folks in chambers that have signed up on this item. So with that, that's just an update. And again, thank you to Dr. Kasseri and our public health team and all of our partners. Okay, let's go to our next item then.
Okay, item four is the report back on health and safety considerations relating to cannabis.
All right, who's going to lead us off?
I will just make a couple of remarks. Thank you. When we last heard the item regarding the cannabis tax measure, at the end of that presentation, several of you asked for a presentation or a report back on the health and safety aspects of cannabis. And so today we have Lieutenant Jamin Martinez will begin. He's from the Sheriff's Department. And following that, Health Services will provide a presentation as well.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Serna, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Before we hear the presentation, I just want to at least preface this from my perspective. I think we all understand that there are going to be adverse health impacts from cannabis, and that's what we're going to hear today. I'm a little not surprised, but I guess hopeful that at some point, we could hear from other experts, not necessarily law enforcement, but other health experts that might be able to educate us or expand on the growing body of research in terms of the medical benefits of cannabis. When we, as the CEO just said, this is a presentation on the impacts and aspects of this particular substance. You know, impacts and aspects run both ways. They can be adverse and they can be positive or beneficial. So just want to make clear what the public and what the board is going to hear, I think, in the next several minutes, is a bit one-sided. It's about the, I would say it's a presentation about the adverse impacts and notably is absent any mention, at least judging by the PowerPoints that I've seen in advance, of the potential benefits of medical cannabis.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Frost.
Oh, who would that be? Phil? Who would that be? And can we?
I don't think there's any shortage of experts out there.
I would be interested in that also, and I think it would be good to hear it before we vote on this item, but I don't know who that would be. But I know that there are benefits.
I think we can probably arrange to find some people.
I certainly think we could probably do that, for sure. I just want to make note that we have to vote on the tax ordinance on July 12. So if we brought someone in to talk about the medical benefits of cannabis, it would have to be on July 12, albeit before the vote on the ordinance.
And just for clarification, Supervisor Kennedy's in the queue, that the "have to" is if there's a decision by the board to want to move forward to a ballot measure that would encompass a proposal that would have a taxing component to it, to the November ballot. That's the "have to." Other than that, there's really no driver behind this.
No, that's correct. It's just that we have to have the ordinance in place in order to get it on the November ballot.
Right, you were accurate. I just wanted to say this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before I hear from Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Desmond, I for one would be interested in having that added information, I think, as Supervisor Frost has indicated, if necessary on that day. Sounds like it is necessary.
Okay. All right, we're going to add to the July 12 agenda. We're going into the evening. Okay, Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Desmond.
Just to make the point, and we may not all agree on this point up here, but the tax issue and legalization of marijuana in any kind, or cannabis of any kind, are two separate issues. We can, you know, choose to put a tax on the ballot without changing the county's policy toward cannabis.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Desmond?
That's exactly, the only thing I was going to say as well, is that the, this presentation, and I agree, another presentation that talks about positive health aspects, to me, are more important to help inform what we might do, decide to do after a tax ordinance. And I don't view them as, I view them as mutually exclusive things, really.
And if I could, no, and I acknowledge that and agree. I would add, though, that while we may be able to discern the differences from a policy perspective and even a legal one in terms of what goes on the ballot, what doesn't go on the ballot, I'm not so certain that members of the public, who may choose to advocate in the meantime between today, what we're going to hear today and July 12, and perhaps on July 12, understand the distinction. So I just wanted to make it a little more clear by way of asking for a presentation on the other part of this, which I think, from a substantive standpoint, in the totality of what this county decides to do about cannabis, if anything, deservedly should be balanced. And so we should hear what those positive aspects are.
Okay. All right, thank you, Board Members. Lieutenant Martinez, you're up. So you got a chance to hear a little of the dialogue, so a little warm-up for you.
No worries. I know this is a controversial subject, and I'm kind of in an interesting position here, but I would suggest to Mr. Serna, I don't disagree. I'm not a medical expert by any means, so I can't speak to the positive medical benefits at all. As you know, this is strictly a presentation on the totality, what we see locally, regionally, on a national level. But to be clear, I'm representing the Sheriff's Department here, and I'm also the Bureau Commander for our HIDA program, which is the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. We focus primarily on, you know, the bigger drugs, methamphetamine, cocaine, heroin, opioids, and fentanyl. Marijuana is really not something that is on our radar screen, but I will do my best today to talk about some of the issues. And to be clear, we're pretty neutral on this stance. The slides, I guess I'm in control. Is this the, okay, sorry. So this is data from Sacramento County Health and Human Services Division. I learned about this data actually in Fresno. I was in Fresno a few weeks ago, talking about opioid response and enforcement and prevention. And down in Fresno, they advised me, they had these studies that were kind of looking at community perceptions of narcotics and alcohol and some other harmful substances. What I found interesting down there was that for youth under the age of 18, marijuana was their number one concern. It's the same concern up here, alcohol being number two, just slightly lower. And then as you get older in life, it tends to dissipate. So we found that interesting, but it does show that we have at least a perspective from the younger generation that marijuana is one of their number one concerns.
That it doesn't dissipate, it looks like, at all for alcohol.
Right. You can see some trends. For me, I would see that the methamphetamine, when you're 19 to 26, that's my world. That's the issue I have concern about. So those are the things that we focus on. A slide here, this is from the International Academy of Science and Impact of Cannabis. They are an organization of doctors who work with our federal partners and provide various data about marijuana. They keep a medical library of peer-reviewed medical literature about cannabis that's available to the general public, so it's a great resource. Library contains about 35-plus categories of marijuana and cannabis: violence, suicide, PTSD, pediatric exposure, motor vehicle accidents, depression, autism, emergency visits. There's just a lot of data there to kind of go look at and collect. But this screenshot in particular is a peer-reviewed literature discussing some data points related to dispensaries, minors, and young adults. Here, both studies from 2017 and 19 suggest there's a higher propensity for young adults and minors with, where access to dispensaries is readily available. They tend to use it a little bit more. I'm not sure if that's shocking to anybody, but again, it's peer-reviewed. I thought it should be relevant to our conversation today. Again, continue on with what I'm referring to as Isaac, just as short. I know it's not the proper enunciation there, but that's what I'm going with. You have three screenshots of different studies. The top one, this slide represents different peer-reviewed studies. Between 2019 to June 2019, September of 2019, 700 medical dispensaries were studied. Just under 68% of those dispensaries failed to comply with laws regarding age-limited signage, which is a concern, and about 35.3% of those broke the law by having, by marking items that appealed to children in their businesses. The second study is from 2012, which is a study of about a little over 9,400 people between the ages of 15 and 26, essentially suggesting that consistent marijuana use during that timeframe of your life leads to increased intimate partner violence. And that's something that obviously catches our attention on the law enforcement side. There are many other studies that also kind of go down this path. I realize this study is dated from 2012. It's 10-year-old date at this point, but if you start looking and going down that rabbit hole, you'll see other studies that are similar. The third study from 2013, again, another dated study, is suggesting that marijuana and vehicle accidents have a correlation. And this also is continued on through other studies. There's a recent one in June of 2021 that says very similar things. So those are things that obviously catch our attention.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could ask a question, if you could. Thank you. So the, I guess, under the second golden bar there, it says, consistent marijuana use was related to an increased risk of intimate partner violence.
Right.
Related. So statistically, do you know if that means there was a direct causal relationship? Or is it the fact that there are other factors that aren't mentioned here that could have been much more influencing on the connection, the relatedness between intimate partner violence? And it just so happens, the marijuana use was kind of thrown in with the other influencers.
I see your point. And to your point, I think that's a, without having this entire document in front of me, I would suggest to you, there probably are other factors that are correlated with almost any study. And I'm sure this study would say something very similar.
Great. Thank you for that.
This other slide here, this next slide, one I also found interesting, done here locally in the county of Sacramento, by the Sacramento County Department of Health and Human Services. They surveyed about 11,000 clients in a program, and within that group that they surveyed, those under the age of 17, 86% of them reported marijuana as their primary substance of use issue. To me, again, I did not know this. I found that very shocking, but it's a fairly consistent theme we're seeing, not only in Fresno. And if you look at a national level, these slides are not included in there. That's a similar kind of response. Again, just recently in Sacramento County, May 13, 2022, this was on the local news, where a young fourth grader brought these to class. These are edibles. And this kind of goes to the point I had made, referenced earlier, about signage and appealing to young kids and the issue that we're going to have there, or could have there. And then you really, truly can't have a conversation, at least in my opinion, about the cannabis industry without talking about the illegal side and the taxation issue, which are kind of, they're compounding effects on all this conversation. So when you look at the legal dispensaries in the county, you have to kind of consider the illicit market. There are a ton of academic journals and peer-reviewed studies and related material that talk about the good and the bad of marijuana. From my experience, there's the in-the-field, what-we-see stuff, and then there's the academic version of these two things, and they often are competing interests. There is plenty of data from various academic sources, and this is just one of them, that is suggesting tax rates are not set terribly well, and they are a challenge. The bottom line being, if you're going to tax marijuana in anywhere, there's always going to be an illicit market that will exist, and typically, it's going to be cheaper on the illicit market than it will on the taxable side. And that, unfortunately, in this state, as I'll get to in a little bit, is a significant number. This 2021 study by the Regional Science of Urban Economics Journal indicates that they observed a drop in property value by 3% to 4% with homes, homes within about a third of a mile of a dispensary. They also estimated that nuisance crimes increased by about 4.2 per 10,000 cents to tracks residents. The thing about this study that I would note, while it is a fairly recent study, this is in Washington, right? It does not correlate necessarily to Sacramento, California, but it was a study that seemed to be relevant to our discussion today. Here, in the Journal of Quantitative Criminology from 2021, their analyst showed some evidence that opening a retail cannabis outlet is associated with an increase in crimes within the immediate area, specifically property crimes, violent crimes, and robbery. This same study goes on to articulate that robberies may be a part because marijuana is a cash-based business. And obviously, if you have cash and lots of cash, you're kind of a target for robbery to an extent. This is from the Journal of Criminal Justice, using UCR data, again, this is going to be out of organ, but just for context here, essentially, they're suggesting that legalization of organ led to an increase in most crime, violent and property crimes, and that they noted, the study noted that legalization of retail sales resulted in increased property crime. They go on further in the study to suggest that the legalization of marijuana has not had a crime-reducing effect, like they kind of had theorized, or has long been believed. Again, another, just another sample, a recent sample. And I promise, this is the last study I'll talk about. You're probably tired of me talking about studies, but they're important. I found this one to be oddly interesting. In 2019, this study saw a reduction in violent crime within a half a mile of a dispensary, but only in the median above, above median income neighborhoods. So that was interesting. I had never heard of that. I thought that was very intriguing. They also observed 13% fewer hard drug and alcohol-related crimes per month, but they did see an increase by 15% of vehicle burglars within a half-mile radius of that same location. So conflicting data, but one I thought was interesting. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. And I just wanted to chime in now, because you prefaced it with, this is your last mention of academic studies and journals and whatnot. But would you, and I say this not to challenge you at all, but would you agree that I can probably go to Cal State Sacramento this afternoon, go to the library, go to the, it used to be the third floor when I was there, the journal stacks, and find an equal number of journal studies that go the other way?
To your point, sir, I would hope you would do that online, but yes. And this is, this is the challenge that I was faced with, frankly. There are, and I've said this before, there are countless studies that are going back and forth. And I will conclude this by telling you just that, that more study is needed, and that we have competing interests here. And ultimately, it's a tough position for me to tell you, crime is going to go up or going to go down.
Right. And I appreciate your candor. It just, I just feel it needs to be said, because again, for the public's benefit, who may be watching the presentation, they may be left with, well, it's the, it's the undisputed truth, or facts, or foregone conclusion that the, you know, the highlighted sections of these various periodicals or journals that you cite is, you know, the unchallenged truth, so.
And I will do my best to refute what I've just told you here in a minute. Bear with me. So our next slide, these are recent headlines. Again, I thought they were pertinent, because this is what I see at my level, is that, this is the top article here from 2021, suggesting that the cannabis illegal market is about $8 billion a year annually in the state of California. And then the article from May of 2022, talking about the complexities of the taxation laws. And they are incredibly complex. Just reading the article was enough to, you basically need a spreadsheet and kind of have to figure this out. But these are the challenges that we face in this state, and this is, this is the side of the illicit market, why it's so successful here, because it's taxed at a different rate. This recent article from June of 20, June 3 of 2022.
Excuse me. Ross, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but it's my understanding that the state is the one who really benefits from the taxation, that we get, as a local jurisdiction, get 20% of the tax or something like that, or do you know?
I don't know those exact numbers, but I think you're in the right area.
And we bear the burden of the administration of all of it. So am I correct?
Well, to an extent, you will, depending on how this looks at some point, right? You're going to have to have some sort of office that would create this, if that's what you're asking me. Like, there's going to be a cost associated with, with starting a new industry in the county.
So the marijuana, the retail outlet then pays tax to us and to the state, and?
Yeah, I would, frankly, I would highly encourage you to go to this, but at least these two links in particular, just to kind of read about what dispensaries are saying and how.
Don't go to the library, is the way.
I'm hearing, you know, I'm hearing from friends. I'm hearing, you know, I'm hearing from friends who, CH, or CHP and who've been involved, involved in the cannabis, that a lot of the, you know, they call them legacy growers are not, the small little guys can't make it. It's the big huge guys that are making it in the cannabis industry because they can, they have the numbers basically, and the little guy has to basically try to figure out, in many cases, struggling to stay alive because of the taxes.
There's a lot of red tape.
Yeah.
To be candid.
Thank you.
Okay, county executives.
Yes, I just want to say that we do have David McPherson from HDL on the line who might be able to better answer that question.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You want to come back to, want to let Lieutenant finish his presentation or you want to do right now?
He's far more qualified than I am to talk about that exact issue. Yes.
Okay, so we'll come back to, so pin that issue and we'll come back to that as you go through. Okay, great, thanks, Sam.
And this is, again, if you recall, the journal from quantitative criminology discussing the concerns about cash based businesses. This was a national headline article from June 3rd, talking about the similar issues, if you will, about the marijuana being a cash, currently a cash only business because they can't make federal deposits and the challenges that comes up with. And then Washington state, again, they're having some violent crimes, robberies and homicides as a result of that. Again, I'm only putting this out there as just data from a national level to consider. It's not a local issue because here is the flip side. This is recently done in March of 2022, the Sacramento County Cannabis Study, Comprehensive Cannabis Study, was published by the City of Sacramento. It's a 200 page plus report. There's a lot of data intake within this report. I'm highlighting over the items that I thought were of interest to the board at the moment. The study noted that the cannabis industry has not had a negative effect on home prices, nor has crime increased near dispensaries. This is locally within our own region, a study done by the City of Sacramento. However, and again, I'm going back to this, this little bit of a theme here, that when addressing underage youth concerns around dispensaries, the report states the balance of consumer demand, including among youth, continues to be met through illicit supply based on price and availability. We're talking about, again, that illegal illicit market that is very robust in the state. Later in the report, they indicated increase in crime has not occurred, but, but that cannabis businesses remain an attractive target for thieves. Again, they're relating, they're relating this around cash. In June 6th of 2022, Sacramento Bee went over the same study, similar results. The only thing that the Bee mentioned that I did not mention, I mentioned it here, is that in 2021, the study observed that property values decreased by about $13 a square foot. They are also calling for more data, more studies, more information, but that's a, whether that's an anomaly or something related is unknown. And I was just amazed where yesterday, I've only read it briefly, the City of Santa Ana has done also a similar study to the one that Sacramento did. The data is very similar. Crime did not go up and things seem to be normal. To give you some context, and this is kind of the, the issue that I think just has to be addressed when we talk about an illegal market and in a legal market and a businesses that want to succeed. Within the CBC Haida AOR, which is what I deal with, between 2019 and 21, there was over 60 million plants, illegal plants seized, 500,000 pounds that was illegally produced seized. That value at a very, very low level is about $8 billion. If you take that on an average, because I think the average gives you more context, not just a big number, that's about 2.8 billion a year. And again, that's a pretty low number. That's within the AOR of CBC Haida, which is 14 counties. So that's kind of a more of a regional look at this on the illegal illicit market.
Go ahead.
That's illegal illicit market in areas where it's legal?
Yeah, it's a mixture, sure, yes.
Oh, thank you.
What I've learned recently in my time back with Haida and then as, as this marijuana issue is starting to kind of really grow, and I would just suggest that Siskiyou County has asked for a state of emergency over the marijuana issue up there and things I've learned in talking to them. The environmental justice, and we do see this here, is a significant issue. So what you have in front of you are pictures of various chemicals, rodent size, debris, trash that is seen at the outdoor illegal grows. I would point to you in the lower left corner there is carbophurin, which is going to be kind of an issue. In the 2020 Marijuana Impact Report that was most recently done, the 2022 is not done yet, so this is the most recent data that I have, carbophurin was detected 82% at outdoor grows. That's a significant, and you can look at the chart, it's a significant concern. It's deadly to wildlife, deadly to humans, and it's being used on these products. This is just a more, more of a summary of the environmental impacts, and this is data that I, I've kind of gone over with EPA, but when you talk about what happens within the region, what we see, you have fire hazards, you have plastic poisoning of animals, killing of animals. Again, I went, I went over this already, but you have trash, debris, sanitation issues, all these things that go with an outdoor grow. And depending on where you are in this county, that can be a significant problem. And you will see these same issues within indoor grows as well. Some are done much better and much cleaner and very well run, the professional ones that are legal, those are great, but the ones that are illegal tend to have a lot of these chemicals and toxic problems.
If I could just ask you a question, again, certainly representing a good portion of the southern part of the county, and I know that, you know, some of your, the team's activities have focused in and around the delta or certainly along the, you know, the, in some cases seasonal waterways, the consumer usually goes dry, but you know, areas that are adjacent to, areas that are farmed or close to waterways. Are you finding, again, these pictures, I don't, I, they're not reflective of something in county.
These pictures are adjudicated cases that I felt free to use without causing any controversy.
So I'm curious though, without, again, overstating or understating it, are you finding, when you do, because we still participate in the camp program, I think, I believe, and I think we just started on the agenda yesterday or last week, but are we finding situations similar to this? Again, this, you know, I don't want to get too far astray from the issue about some policy decision to place a matter on the ballot for taxation, but on the other hand, I think to some of the impacts that you, maybe you're seeing in the field that wouldn't come to our, we will read about, you know, garner 15,000 plants that were being, but what about, do you see the same type of activity here with stuff strewn and, you know?
My very candid response is yes. The totality might be a little different and the context may be different. The issue, the very frank issue is that we, the sheriff's office and most law enforcement agencies in this region, this is not something we have ever really wrapped our head around, dealing with poisonous substances as a crime, right? We do a lot of other things really well. This is new for us. And this, this issue is becoming a significant issue up and down the state because the volume of the illicit market is now outside all over our state. And we're learning, I am learning that, well, actually that's, you can't have that anymore. That's a, that's a federally restricted item. We don't, we didn't, never thought of, you know, these pesticides as in that context.
Right, you show you garnered plants, you might arrest the folks that are there for that activity, other activities, but you're, you weren't going to look to the chemical that was sitting there on the shelf.
It was this, it was this kind of the, I guess, the unknown. We never thought about it that, in that aspect. We've been educated more and may have realized we've kind of been missing this.
So when law enforcement responds, obviously either you've done an investigation or you may get tipped off. I know you do aerial surveys and, you know, some of the folks got pretty sophisticated being able to hide that even with outdoor grows, but do you have somebody from environmental management with you, you know, as a part of that so that, again, as you're getting better about, if you're going to cite reasons for either arrest or for, you know, illegal activity, I assume some of those things have federal, state and or local, you know, penalties associated with them. If nothing else helps you track them. So do you have those folks along with you or do they come out to the side or you just, you take the plants, you, you know, if people are still there, you've encountered them and whatever happens, and then a lot of times they scatter and you clean the place up and the farmer or the property owner that was.
It's an interesting logistical challenge. Part of this is because some of these things happen contemporary, quickly on, you know, they happen quickly.
Right.
And so we don't have, there is no, if, for lack of a term, there's no environmental expert attached to a Haida team.
Okay.
And so we have to reach out or pre-plan if we can. But again, this is new, this is very new. I have reached out personally to the Department of Toxic Substance Controls, Cal EPA. They are, they understand our challenge, they're on board with us, but like everybody else, it's not a full-time position. It's, call us when you need us, we might be able to be there, we may not be able to. It's an interesting dichotomy to kind of go through because again, we're not trained on how to even deal with some of these chemicals. And then what do we, where do we store them? There's all, there's a lot of challenges with these things. It's, it's a little bit more complicated than just the plant grows and we.
Yeah. I would just say, I think it's an important component, you know, obviously you're, you know, bringing forth the information that you researched and boiled down for today's, you know, presentation, and certainly I'm appreciative of that and others are as well, I'm sure. But just, you know, that activity, again, we're talking about, you know, illicit activity, you know, and sometimes major grows, other times maybe of a lesser scale in relation to plants, but where we've got contaminants, toxic materials that, you know, are not even supposed to be used in the manner being used, let alone may not even be permissible in the state or in the United States. I don't know. And we're next to waterways, we're drainage and irrigation canals, places where people reside, where in a lot of cases, obviously you interface with wildlife, environmentally sensitive areas, areas I'm familiar with, certainly in District 5. And I guess I'm, you know, I would, as a follow on, I think certainly, you know, your, your team is tasked with, you know, a lot of responsibilities and marijuana isn't the highest on the list, but I know we do have the, I say the camp program and I think you get some other funding supplements that, I think it's, it's important because again, that's part of the piece that, as you said, may have been a bit subtle, but now you're recognizing the impacts and what that means certainly to, you know, our, our general population, but certainly to our, just our environment. I guess I, I'd be curious to know over time as, as you build some capacity and have a better understanding, because even if you show up and there's nobody from the environmental organization that's there or agency, you folks are going to be able to identify it. Then I'd say, what do you do with it and how do you dispose of it? And I guess it goes to, before you arrived, if they were using those materials and applying them in, you know, non-agronomic, you know, applications or we're not even, or just absolutely prohibited applications, and yet the farmer next door has regulated products for herbicides and pesticides and so forth and registers with the ag commissioner and buys products that are, you know, certainly approved and licensed and certified through state and federal agencies. It's just, it's a real contrast because I know sometimes, you know, there's a great deal of trespasses involved with those types of things as well. So I guess, let me ask you a question. So, so beyond what you're learning, how do you see maybe going forward with respect to that particular, you know, when you're out trying to?
Well, I'll be, I'll be very candid. I received some information yesterday from Cal EPA that I frankly think you should, you would probably be very interested in. I'm not going to discuss it today because I am not that expert, but in what I have read, it causes me some significant concern above and beyond what we're talking about today. But that has little to do with the legalized section of this conversation.
And we actually had someone, and Phil will recall this, you know, a few years back that came and showed us, not so much in the county, although there were referenced maybe one or two situations, but showed us in the forest lands and the, you know, federal lands, but certainly in our adjacent counties, you know, some of the destruction, certainly the, you know, threat to wildlife, just to the waterways and some of the things that they had, you know, honestly stumbled upon, but encountered out there. And it was pretty eye opening, at least from my perspective. And so again, I, I for one be interested in the information and how we might be supportive, again, because that role irrespective of what we talk about here today, still follows to law enforcement and certainly, you know, your team and Sheriff's Department are, you know, one of the primary agencies in, in the unincorporated area anyway, where we largely agricultural, where these are, you know, if they're indoor grows, you could have it going down the sewer system, but out there it's just spread on the land and it goes where it goes, so.
And I think I have a suggestion for you related to that later.
Okay.
But the waterway is frankly a significant concern.
Okay, very good. Well, thanks. I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation, but Supervisor Frost, you have a question?
Along that line, I wanted to ask the environmental waste, is that something that, I know you're not an expert, but it, you know, from what you've read, do you perceive it's something that has to be, I mean, can you clean it off of a property or once you have, someone buy a big property that has been growing marijuana and they've been using these chemicals, does it ruin the property forever? I mean?
I can't, I have no idea how long carbophurin would stay in the ground. Those, that would be an EPA question for sure, but it seems like a very legitimate concern and I just, one that I wish I could answer, but.
I've heard that the chemicals are, it's huge and the water, they use a lot of water to grow it.
Well, I will be, again, to be candid, I have concerns about when we do marijuana eradications of the illegal grows, basically my teams practically need to be put on a Tyvek suit and with masks on. That has not, had been a practice for many, many years. It has to be now because of the, what we are learning, what's in these plants is not great, especially in the illegal grows.
But okay, then my other question is, is that your area of, do you even enforce that or is it more of an administrative or who, who enforces this? Is it our code enforcement or the state or?
It's, again, my estimation is it's going to be a combination. So the DA's office, I've met with Doug Whaley and talked to him about some of this. It can be, it can be code enforcement on some angles, it can be the state EPA in other angles, it can be the sheriff's office for some things, ultimately it could be the fire department. It's going to frankly require, at least if we're seriously considering this, a kind of a unique task force that deals with just this issue.
Okay, thank you.
This is a slide that I honestly had to question, but it's been packed up by more data. This is from the US Department of Agriculture. I did, again, I did not know this, I was flabbergasted by this, but when we talk about droughts, if one plant growing outdoors is 900 gallons in the growing season and you start multiplying that over multiple plants that are legally grown outdoors, that is a significant water drain on our resources. It's like almonds. It's like almonds. This is from the Ecology Research Center. It's a, again, this is a kind of a partner with Haida. They are looking at this from ecological standpoint, and what I found fascinating was they are, again, backing up the 900 gallons per plant. They discussed fertilizer and pesticides and they are studying that effect on outdoor grows, how they affect the environment with the various wildlife that's out there. Their suggestion, outside entity suggestion is the ways to do, to deal with this is essentially interdiction enforcement and disruption and a removal of sites. That is their recommendation from top to bottom. And I mentioned I would talk about a model. This is, again, this is San Diego's model, doesn't have to be anybody's model, this is just an example of a model. It's one I actually think is fairly decent, has a law enforcement component, has fire authorities, code enforcement, Department of Fish and Game, the Water Board, all working collaboratively to kind of address the outdoor grow issues that they deal with, the environmental concerns that they deal with. And I'm sure this, again, this was initiated in 18, I would imagine might have evolved a little bit. But this, this, this is frankly what would be required to do some sort of illegal, long term, sustainable plan and probably ultimately if we're in partnership with the business community in ways to make sure that the legal industry can keep growing. And I'll leave you with this, I know I've talked way too much probably at this point and I apologize, but you know, considering illegal, illegal illicit enforcement program, the data is very mixed. To Mr. Serna's point, it goes back and forth. One example of that is there's no vehicle code violation for driving under the influence of strictly cannabis. So I can't provide you data or numbers that say cannabis industry will create more DUI. I can't give that to you. Talk to CHP about it, we can't do that. And then Sacramento County does have some pretty vast natural wildlife resources that are under threat because of legal grows and their correlation. So with that.
Great, thank you, Lieutenant. We have some questions. I know that we'll get the gentleman on the phone in a moment. So Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Desmond?
It's my understanding that trained individuals can detect if someone's under the influence, driving under the influence, and so that's something that you could do if we did legalize or, you know, or is that something you're doing now or?
You can certainly detect if somebody's under the influence of marijuana, but there is no specific penal code that says you were driving down the highway or freeway and as, as a result of your actions, we, you were stopped and ultimately maybe arrested because you were driving specifically under the influence of marijuana, that's tracked under a different category. So it's very difficult for anybody to pull the actual strictly cannabis related data as opposed to alcohol.
Or a threshold, right?
Or a threshold.
So there's no way to enforce driving under the influence?
Of strictly marijuana. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You can certainly detect whether you're under the influence.
Well, that's a problem. That seems like a little bit of a problem, doesn't it?
I think by, I was talking with CHP this week, they, they tend to view that as a problem.
Thank you.
Good segue to Mr. Desmond.
That's perfect. I'd like to weigh in on that issue on that point. Actually, there was a lot of discussion about this issue when Prop 64 was going through and the authors at, with some CHP involvement, they inserted some language and some funding in that proposition to provide more training for law enforcement throughout the state. But yeah, there is no blood alcohol, like there is an equivalent section for a specific blood alcohol level, you know, if you're .08 or above, there's no objective level, because cannabis is completely different, you know, substance. I mean, and impairment will depend on, you know, frequency of use and things like that. But I, I mean, they are doing a lot more in terms of gathering the data, and if they do detect someone driving under the influence of some other kind of controlled substance, and there is a test, they're doing a better job, I think, of keeping the records. I mean, it hasn't, it hasn't become a huge crisis like a lot of people, like a lot of people feared, and that's, that is certainly the case. I mean, that's been the highway patrol's experience. Yes, more difficult to test for it, but not, we're not seeing huge problems on the roadways. So, thank you for the presentation. I think this is very, it's very valuable in terms of a policy discussion at one point. If we, if this board does choose to put an ordinance or a ballot measure on the ballot in terms of taxation, then we would have to decide, if that passes, decide on what we would do from a policy perspective. And I think this is really valuable. For me, it seems like a lot of these issues are also, you know, we're kind of relitigating or arguing about something that has already been decided. Cannabis is legal in the state of California, and that is not going to change. And we are surrounded by it. And what I would ask you, Lieutenant, what, you know, you're on HIDA, you're obviously very aware of, I guess, the proliferation of cannabis in Sacramento County. And let me ask you this, I mean, is there cannabis in unincorporated Sacramento County?
I'm sure there is, yes.
Okay, well, thank you. I know for a fact there is, because I know an awful lot of people who use it recreationally, and they go buy it in the city, or they get it delivered to their address in the county. And so many of the things you're talking about here are clearly why the public voted for Prop 64, because people said, look, it's here, it's a reality, these environmental crimes from outdoor grows, these candy that's marketed to children, we need to, we need to take that industry and regulate it, and protect people who are vulnerable to it, or vulnerable to its abuses, whether it's environmental crimes, or in the retail, in the retail world. And I think that's where, you know, I'm very interested in what your comments were, and how you kind of square your own experience, and you mentioned Santa Ana, with some of the studies that you cited, because those studies were seen pretty unequivocal, that even where it became legal, we were still seeing the same amount of problems. But you're saying you're not, you know, you quoted the Sacramento Bee study, what's your own experience in the county?
Okay, I want to make sure I'm understanding your question correctly. My experience in cannabis and crime, are they correlated, and has one increased or the other?
Yes, yes.
I would suggest to you that cannabis and crime can be related, but again, we're talking different levels, we're talking homicides and robberies and things like that. Whether there's been a mass explosion of one or the other, I'll be very candid, we have not tracked. So, what I mean by that is, when we go to a call for service, and somebody has been, I don't know, beaten, stabbed, or something like that, there is no field for us to say, was this a cannabis-related event? Did this occur because it was a marijuana robbery? There's, that data, to track that data and tell you very specifically that we've had 12 homicides directly correlated to marijuana, I can't give that to you. I do see that as an experience, having 22 years now, going to calls for service, reading about other calls, and at my level at the HIDA now, seeing other agencies and what they're up to, and what they're dealing with. We certainly see violent crime as a correlation, but I think those things may just be part of, for lack of a better term, that's just part of that culture. Does that make sense? The illegal?
The illegal, and that's, I think that's the.
Right. I'm not suggesting this is the legal.
Legal market.
Suspensory is a violent criminal network. I'm not suggesting that by any means. I'm just suggesting that when we deal with the illicit, illegal market, you have a lot of.
That's where the problems occur.
It's a criminal network, right? We have cartels involved in this, in this growing behavior, we have gangs involved, we have a lot of different criminal elements doing this, because there's a lot of money in it.
Right, right. And you also see, you know, some of the illegal actions marketing to children, you see the environmental crimes. And to me, I mean, I mentioned this when we talked about this a few weeks ago, that this discussion all screams to me for more state involvement, you know, state consistency throughout the state. That would be helpful to law enforcement, I know that, too, but, but I think the biggest problems are clearly caused by an illicit market. And you're right, having a tax structure that's fair and reasonable and balanced, that strikes that right balance in driving away the illicit market, and helping legitimate businesses succeed is what we should be looking at. But thank you very much.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, let me say I appreciate Supervisor Desmond's questions and comments, and certainly, Phil likewise, about his unique lens that he gets to apply here, based on his, you know, his past profession of enforcing the law. I think it's going to be very helpful to, you know, a robust discussion at a later time in terms of the policy implications. Certainly want to thank Lieutenant for his very thoughtful presentation. But I also want to just underscore, at least kind of generally what I took from it, which is there is a substantial amount of very useful information here, but much of it seems to be centered around the illegal illicit impacts associated with cannabis, which is helpful. But you could probably have guessed from some of my leading questions earlier about kind of the statistical demonstration of connection between cannabis and certain other cultural factors or criminal activity issues. You know, that's kind of where I'm hoping to acquire even more understanding about the specific impacts associated with legal, regulated, taxed cannabis, because that's really what we're talking about. We're not, I'm not talking about any way sanctioning or doing anything even unintentional that would influence even more illicit activity. I don't think that serves any of us well. In fact, we're probably more interested in going in the other direction to figure out how we take even greater steps to tackle that problem. But, you know, I think overall, this is, again, helpful. It raises some other questions for me that I think in the course of that later policy conversation will come to bear. So, again, just wanted to thank you for giving this so much thought and sharing it with us.
If I may, to your point, there's more studies being done by the state of California directly related to legal cannabis businesses and crime. They're still being done. I get no way to pull the data, but it is being done.
Sure, no, I appreciate that. I mean, it's, I mean, it's such a great diversion from, you know, decades past in terms of the illegality of it, that it's still relatively new. So, you know, in fact, there's probably lots that can be said about the legal market that we won't know for decades, because it's just going to take time and experience to understand what those impacts are, but couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Yeah, sure.
Just add one more last point. I mean, I think if this does move forward, and we get to that point where we're having that policy discussion, I mean, your voice will be critical to those efforts to help inform ultimately the decisions we make. So, hopefully, we'll be seeing you again.
I'm happy to assist. All you got to do is call, you know that. Thank you.
Thanks, Lieutenant. Before you leave, I just would say, I think that the example of the San Diego Task Force, irrespective of what happens on other matters that are related to this, I think that, you know, with the large agricultural landscape that we have in this county, that it would be, I think, useful and probably helpful, not just to law enforcement, but I think, and I guess I would just drag my comments to the county executive, to look at how, again, we might constitute something that would certainly allow for response where appropriate. And we took the code enforcement approach here relative illu grows, and, you know, $1,000 a plant, blah, blah, blah. You know, folks know how to play that game, too. You know, we go out there to confiscate, and, you know, they move them the, you know, the night before we get there, because we give them notice. And, you know, and then the aftermath, or the sheriff gets a complaint and goes out with code enforcement, and they get wind of it, and, you know, they leave a mess, but, you know, clearly, the plants are gone. And I don't know that administratively, we've collected one penny from, you know, again, kind of a paper tiger ordinance that we put in place. But I do think that having a task force that involves, you know, certainly our public health, our environmental management, probably our ag commissioner, and, you know, law enforcement, and maybe some of the folks that were mentioned here, that aren't necessarily county associates, certainly fire departments as well, because there's an issue out there irrespective of, you know, of what's done about the matter we're talking about related to a tax measure, and/or, you know, allowing for activities that are permitted under state, if local jurisdictions, jurisdictions so desires to do that and undertakes that. And so, and I think it would be helpful, because the exposure out there, and with the waterways, and again, maybe that information we're talking about, about you've learned about recently, shared with us, as it relates to new chemicals or chemicals that are very potent that are being used, but are actually, if they're being identified, as you folks are going out this season and the seasons to come, you know, we need to be concerned about that. Those are, again, those waterways, we fight, you know, to, you know, protect our delta, to protect our waterways. We talked yesterday, just, you know, regarding trash and debris and other introduction of all kinds of materials into, you know, basically, not just our drinking water, but into water that's so important for so many reasons. And if this is an issue, I don't know what magnitude, so I don't want to, you know, as I said, really overstate it, but if we're finding that, then we ought to at least be prepared to, at the local level, do what we can to, you know, be responsive in, you know, collecting that material, seeing to the, it doesn't get left just on site, and, you know, maybe there needs to be some ability to confiscate and to then dispose of, and if there's a cost associated with that, we ought to, we ought to talk about that. So, maybe something internally, and that we could have some discussion about, and a report back to the board at the appropriate time, so.
We can certainly take a look at that.
Okay, thanks. You know, I wanted to say, before you leave, I think Supervisor Frost had asked a question earlier, and you mentioned that David was on the line.
On the line, yes. That's what I was going to just.
Okay, sorry. Okay, yeah. So, again, assuming you hear the question, if not, you want to restate your, just restate the question, so he can respond to it. I trust he's been listening, and, David?
Chairman, I'd actually appreciate the question. I heard it in different views, so it might be helpful, to be clear, I get the answer.
Okay. Supervisor Frost?
I think it was.
What I?
Relating to, oh, gosh, what was my question?
Who enforces it, well, yeah.
Who enforces?
Taxes, who did the taxing?
No, okay. Thank you, Natasha.
Supervisor, you asked what the taxing, state taxing rates were, you were wondering what.
Oh, yeah. I wanted to know, because my understanding was, we make the small amount of the tax, but we bear the burden of administering everything around it, and the state really gets most of the money, is my understanding. Is that true?
So, you are correct in part of that, in that the state charges an excise tax, which we went over in our presentation. They charge a flower tax to the cultivators, which they are looking at eliminating, and they have an excise tax of 15% that they are removing. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understood it, though. I'm sorry.
Let me clarify it. So, yeah, so Prop 64 had indicated that there would be a excise tax. Am I talking over you?
You're kind of breaking up a little bit, David. I don't know, you got part of that.
So, to clarify, can you hear me okay?
No.
We missed everything, except can you hear me?
Okay. So, back to the state, so that the state has a tax on per ounce to the cultivators, which goes directly to the state. Then they have a 15% excise tax from the retailers that goes to the state, and the way it's designed is Prop 64 then breaks down the funds to go to public health organizations, youth prevention organizations, law enforcement. I think one of the board members indicated about the highway patrol, they get funding for studies related to DUI arrests and things of that nature. So, it goes into big pocket funds related to that. Now, when it comes to the local side, to the county, that is the purpose of developing a tax ordinance, so that whatever funds come from that go directly to the county to do what they want for general purposes.
Is that a set percentage, or what's left? I mean, what is, what is left after all that? Do you know?
Yeah, yeah. So, when we went through that presentation, depending on the types of activities that you may consider permitting, if you even do, then the tax rates are different, as we did in the discussion about the various activities that may occur that you permit. If you don't permit certain activities, obviously, then you don't get any funding for that. But those that you do fund, the highest rates typically are on the retail, because that's the one that makes the most profitability in the industry.
Is there a way for us to charge less, like if we wanted to make it more, like if we wanted to place requirements for organic growing, and that might cost more to grow, but we would tax less, or do we have flexibility, or is it set in how we have to tax?
You have flexibility to create subcategories, subsections, subactivities, for example, indoor grow, mixed light grow, outdoor grow, or even the types of activities, which would be volatile extractions products versus non-volatile extraction products, that typically have different price point rates, in which you can have some flexibility that makes it difficult when you have deliveries coming from out of town, where people will then just buy from places that you can't regulate, as you are today, versus buying something that would be in the county.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it. Good. Lieutenant, thank you so much for your presentation, thanks for being with us this afternoon, appreciated response and your presentation. Okay, we do have a caller on the line? Okay, so we'll take the caller, we have another portion of this.
We still have a presentation.
Yeah, we still have additional presentation. We've got Dr. Melody Law and Dr. Ryan Quist from DHS, who will be coming up.
Okay. Good afternoon, Ryan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Supervisors.
Your first time presenting to the board?
Oh, yes.
Very good.
I'm Melody Law, I'm a deputy health officer with Public Health. Behavioral Health and Public Health have prepared this brief presentation on health impacts of cannabis, per board's request.
Dr. Quist knows how to run the clicker, so you're in good hands. He's done, he was here yesterday. Go ahead, Melody.
It's okay. Smoke cannabis, regardless of how it is smoked, whether it be through vape devices or any type of smoking devices, aerosol devices, can harm lung issues and cause scarring and damage to small blood vessels. And also, cannabis smoke has many of the same toxins that tobacco smoke does, all the carcinogens and irritants. Another thing is cannabis, smoking cannabis can also lead to, this is an acute health issue, smoking cannabis can lead to a greater risk of bronchitis, cough, mucus production, although with cessation of any of these behaviors can generally improve. And just like tobacco smoke, cannabis, secondhand cannabis smoke can also contain many of the same toxins and carcinogens. Moving on to some health impacts on youth, the human brain grows, develops until about age 25, so use of cannabis during the adolescent age and young adulthood may harm the developing brain. The negative effects of this include difficulty thinking and problem solving, and problems with memory and learning, reduced in motor coordination, difficulty maintaining attention, and problems with school and social life.
Okay, if you could pause this for a moment. Supervisor Frost?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I must have.
That was the last time?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, very good. Continue, Melody. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Ryan Quist, Behavioral Health. The couple, just a few brief points that my prevention community would likely include as a part of the impacts. Our first, higher potency marijuana has been found to be more addictive. We see an example here where it says, one study showed that potency today versus 20 years ago is akin to caffeine change from 120-ounce cola a day to 33, sorry, to 33-16-ounce cappuccinos a day. In addition, we have seen that cannabis may lead to increased emergency department visits. That's something that we are hearing from our EDs here in Sacramento County.
Okay, pause for a second. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. A little puzzled by this slide, just because the first bullet point speaks to addiction, and it makes this a fairly broad statement about potency being connected or influencing level of addiction. And then the And then the quote is puzzling because it doesn't really, I don't, doesn't offer anything in that context. It makes a connection to caffeine, I guess, which I guess, that's a, I guess it's an addictive substance, I don't know, but it's not really, it just seems disjointed. So I'm just wondering, because I've always heard, and again, I have not delved into researching in any great detail, the addictive properties are not of marijuana, but I've heard over the years anecdotally that it's not necessarily an addictive substance. So can you help reconcile that for me?
I've heard that narrative as well. Within our prevention community, though.
Is your mic on?
I'm sorry?
Is your mic on?
No.
Sorry about that. No worries. Within, I'd say, I've heard those conversations as well. I'd say within our prevention community, we have, we have youths that have come forward and talked about their experiences with addiction, where they perceive it as an addictive experience. And so that's, I have seen both sides of it. The example here was intended to equate the addictiveness of the caffeine, that if you're, if you drink a lot of caffeine, you drink, you are more likely to get addicted to it. Likewise, if you smoke more marijuana, the thought is that you're more likely to get addicted to it.
Is it the thought or the proof?
This researcher, there, you'll see researchers with various points. This researcher concludes that it was addictive.
And not to go too far down this path, but can you say with any authority today, is cannabis, has cannabis been determined to be chemically addictive? For instance, compared to opioids?
Chemically addictive?
Well, you know that opioids, they block the mu receptor and there's a lot of science behind, neurological science behind why it is physiologically addictive based on its chemistry, its effect on the brain. Is there something similar for cannabis?
I think we've hit the end of my expertise on that. I'd say, I'd say what we have is we have youths coming to us telling them, telling us that they have an experience that feels addictive.
Okay, thank you.
I would just say, though, to the comparison there about potency, I don't know if it'd be physically possible to drink 33-16-ounce cappuccinos in a day, but if somebody did that. Man, I wonder why he'd drive 120 miles an hour, holy smoke.
I certainly don't challenge the claim that today's cannabis, generally speaking, is much more potent than it was in the 60s, 70s, even the 80s. I mean, I've heard that consistently from different, you know, corners of the community, but I, but I just, there's that part of it, potency, and that's what I was getting at is potency and addiction seem to be two different things, at least for me.
Appreciate that. I wanted to ask both about the second bullet point there, the one on the emergency department, emergency room visits. And, you know, this takes a period of time, 10 years, 2005, 2015, but you, what really struck me was that you said that we're seeing a parallel rise, as you're hearing from some of the health systems. Could you elaborate on that? Again, if we're, you know, we're going to hear, I guess, in a couple of weeks about the health prospects of medical marijuana or marijuana in general, but this statistic, for one, you know, even though it may not be legal, there's access through a variety of means for young people, and if they're showing up in the emergency room, I guess I'm curious about that, Ryan, any more information you have, kind of the local take on that.
I think that this next slide sort of talks to where some of that might be associated. So cannabis disorder has also been associated with depression, suicide, and psychotic symptoms. And so that's something that we are seeing in some of the emergency rooms is where they're experiencing other symptoms that came along with that. I will, yeah. The other thing we've heard, we've seen also in research is that we have a conversion, what we call a conversion rate from temporary psychotic symptoms to chronic psychotic symptoms at a higher rate than some other illicit drugs.
Twice the level of opioids?
That's what the research.
Is there a way, could you, you listed on the web, but could you, is there a copy of that study available? Could you send a hard copy of that? Everybrainmatter.org? Is that just?
Happy to follow up.
Yeah, if you could. Yeah, I'd be interested to see that.
Sure?
Yeah, sure.
Hopefully you can hear me. So I just want to make sure that when you say chronic psychotic symptoms, is that the same as permanent psychotic symptoms?
Chronic means long, sustained, over, I don't know about permanent. I, that would be a difficult one for me to.
Okay. As a non-scientist in this field, I would speculate that amphetamines, especially methamphetamines, have a much more permanent psychotic effect or influence versus cannabis. But I would love to be proven wrong with, you know, the science.
Sure.
I guess I'm curious, too, because we talk about conversion rates, but I don't know what they're, again, not a scientist, but I would be interested in the data because, you know, how big of, you know, what sort of group are you looking at? Are you looking at hundreds versus thousands, thousands versus 10,000s? I mean, I don't know. But, you know, that's, I guess I find out, it's a little bit startling, I guess, if I, no better way to say it than that, so. Almost 50%.
To that point.
Yes.
Through the chair. I do have a friend who had a son, age 18 or 19, who smoked marijuana and flipped into a psychosis and schizophrenia. And I read some, I have read studies in the past around this, that I guess between the ages of 19 and 25, you are, those people who are predisposed to schizophrenia, oftentimes that's when it manifests itself. And the, I don't know if it's the strong, is it THC? I don't know why it's stronger now than it was in the 60s, but that's what I've heard also. But they're saying there is a percentage that are, that seems, is that what you understand? That they're actually, is it the THC that's causing them to flip into schizophrenia?
That's what the research, is this one working any better?
Yeah.
Not much, but.
That is what the research, a number of researchers are suggesting.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe we can get a handheld mic that has a, I know, we didn't know, I was going to say, we see if we can get one that has a, if the battery's dead on or something, we can check, the clerk's office can check that for you. Thanks. Go ahead. Because it makes it tough, you gotta keep flipping back and forth, so go ahead.
Yeah, we just have a few more slides. I just wanted to answer Supervisor Serna's question about addictive properties of marijuana. On my non-public health hat, I'm addictionologist, so I practice in substance use, and yes, it is known, and CDC also notes that to be addictive substance. And the potential of addiction comes on the amount of use over a span of time. So it depends on both potency, chronicity, and the amount that is used. And also when a person is used at a high, younger age, the addiction potential is higher.
Thank you. That's, it's good to know I'm speaking to the right person. So, is there a difference, though, between physical addiction and psychological addiction?
In concept of addiction, it's actually a combination. If a person is addicted to a substance, it's both physiological and behavior. So in any type of substances, including cannabis, opiates, it is, when you're treating, you have to treat both. So, yes, so both components are involved.
So someone that's trying to withdraw from years of high potency cannabis use will have physical symptoms manifest?
Correct.
Okay.
So there's acute withdrawal symptoms, as well as we call post-acute withdrawals. So that's after, you know, 10 to 12 days, 20 days. And then there's a long-term acute, a long-term withdrawal symptoms that can come and go. So it depends on a chronicity of use. So if you're a short-term user, then the withdrawal symptoms may disappear, but if you're a long-term user, that may last longer.
And I, let me just state the obvious. I assume that all applies to alcohol?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other question was asked about the opioids and the psychological effects of it. It is true, what Supervisor Frost said, the potential of having psychosis, developing the THC or stimulant aspect of it can serve as a trigger, a stim, yeah, stimulant or a trigger. So moving on to cannabis in pregnancy, we see that smokers, cannabis smokers who are mothers, can have problems in their children when they're growing up in attention, memory, behavior, solving skills, and in their children. And also the newborn, the acute effect would be in newborns, they can have lower birth rate, lower birth weight and size, and including abnormal neurological developments. So the THC that was mentioned, the tetrahydrocannabinol, the psychoactive compound of the cannabis can pass to infants through secondhand smoke.
So can I ask you a question, Melody? This all relates to, at least as it's been outlined largely to smoking, ingesting it that way. What about if you, with the edibles that you ingest it that way, is that then still transferable to, in this case, the fetus, to the baby? Or can you have similar effects that we talked about? You know, long-term effects, addictiveness and so forth? Does that apply?
Are you talking about edibles?
Yeah, edibles, yeah.
Well, secondhand smoke is just on the smoke.
No, I wasn't, yeah, I know, I heard that smoke. But I'm asking about, can you, you know, can the infant or the newborn, are you going to be transmitted through, or is it only through smoke?
I have actually not read anything with regards to edibles, so I'd rather not say anything that may not be correct.
All right. And what about, so let me ask you about edibles relates to person that's ingesting them, though. The questions that you were responding to Supervisor Serna a moment ago about the addictiveness and, you know, chronicity of, you know, after effects depending upon the use and so forth, does that apply to edibles? Or you haven't read anything about that either?
So the edibles, though, the difference effects of it is the potency of it. Because a person, depending on manufacturers, even though a particular piece of edible will say whatever the concentration is, but it's not widely spread. You know, you would think that one piece of five milligram, let's say, you'd think it's evenly spread out, but it's not. So if a person eats a particular piece that is highly concentrated, then you can have an acute effect. But the chances of spreading it, passing it on to a child, you know, fetus, may not be.
Okay, okay, I get that part. But what about if somebody continues to use edibles over the long term and depending on quantities and potency and so forth? I guess I'm just asking.
Right, yes. So, yes, depending on use and chronicity, there is also negative health impacts.
And just one other thing, you saw the presentation that Lieutenant, and it was reported in the news, the knockoff on the, you know, on one of the candies that, you know, has colorful, you know.
Brandy.
Yeah, branding, right. That's a good way to state it. So those types of things, it could actually have an acute effect depending upon how much was loaded into that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. In those products, usually, you know, it's not really marketed with a certain amount of milligrams posted, right?
Right, it's not. So a knockoff on Skittles, in that, in this case, it could be very harmful, or it could be more or less addictive depending upon what was in it, but you don't, but you really don't know because it's not listed on the packaging?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So with legalization and commercialization, so some states have, Colorado and others have legalized cannabis. And as Ryan mentioned, studies have show increase in ER visits, DUI, and the poisoning, the poisoning is specifically related to the varying concentrations in varying products. And also the self-reported cannabis use has increased in some groups. And I will say in next slides that that could be due to perceived social acceptance of it, so maybe they're reporting it higher. Other limitations is that lack of historical data on this issue, it makes it, it makes, it creates a challenges in making conclusive cause and effect. And now that more, you know, states are legalizing it, maybe more impartial research may show the positive impacts that Supervisor Serna was talking about. Lastly, it is difficult to measure impacts of commercialization in areas where legalization occurred previously.
Okay. Supervisor Frost had a question.
Would you say that cannabis or marijuana is a gateway to opioids or other drugs?
So CDC research does show that youth that have used marijuana, cannabis, have higher rates of using other substances, including alcohol, opiates, stimulants.
Thanks.
Could I entail, same for alcohol? Similar to alcohol?
Starting cannabis as a primary?
No, is, can it be stated that accurately that alcohol can also serve as a gateway?
I guess anything can be. I have not read up on that specific aspect.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Any other questions, Melody or Dr. Quist? Well, we appreciate you being here and to know that you're addictionologist. We may call upon you in some future data, weigh in, but certainly thank you for your work with Public Health and for compiling this information today. Anything else you want to conclude with, or?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does that conclude the presentation? It does? Okay. Then we do have a caller and I'll bring it back to the board before we close out.
You want the caller? Okay, please transfer the caller. You have three minutes.
No worries. All right. How are you doing today? Good afternoon, Woodland's McKenzie Wilson. I want to preface this statement with the fact that I actually love this plant, and I love that it is growing on corners in other countries, just like a shrub. Of course, the concern goes down over age. The fear tactic of just saying no, I'm sorry, the fear tactic of just saying no, drugs are bad scares children. And as they grow up and they realize they've been lied to about it, of course, the concern changes and the concern goes down. The first presentation with 10-year-old data was one-sided and full of bias and full of misinformation. And I recognize it was his job to do that and make sure that we fear crime to justify their budgets, but what a stretch to correlate domestic violence with pot smoking. And shameful that we screenshot this document without reading it fully and having anything accredited or really to back it up. Not excusing the child that brought a bag of Skittles of what they thought was candy to school, but, you know, excuse my language, but still, you know, shit happens and things are accidents. My kids even asked me about my cookies and my dog's eating my pot. And the reality that cannabis is saving children's lives is way more real. Of course, the black market can't keep up with the taxes and regulations. Had it not been treated like a new gold rush and charged so much for permits and things, goers wouldn't have to find markets that will bypass all of the regulations. This black market is fueled by people who cannot afford the high-priced weed. You have no idea how many medical marijuana patients we've pushed to the black market just so they can afford their medications, and how many small businesses are struggling to survive who are there now as well. I appreciate the addition, the addition of the recent and local data that refutes half of what that first presentation highlighted and talked about for most of it. I appreciate him admitting that he didn't have much to go on, and I still hear that they were unfortunately trying to make connections that were way out of their purview. My point is that this presentation is nothing but fear mongering, and as the data showed in the beginning, as people find out they've been lied to about it, the fear dissipates. I guess my concern is that all of this enforcement is going to go into the little guys in our community, the ones already struggling, the ones being forced into the black market, the ones who want to. the ones who want to learn about how to grow it safely but live in a county that comes from a carceral lens instead of a public help one that would provide resources on how to use marijuana and grow it safely and dispose of some of that safely without punishment. I'm fueled by loss of billions. I'm not into your legal roundup. Whatever model you create should include, and I heard you say this, Natoli, so thank you so much, but should include things like the Department of Public Health and come from a place that values lives over money and incorporates the war on drugs and the very real disenfranchisement analysis that this will and has always brought to communities of color. And since we're asking about the taxes, it'd be cool if somebody could ask and have presented how much of that money goes to community and how much of that goes to cops? Because if the cops are going to ask for more money to do enforcement on this, I'd like to know by line item how they're already spending it. I also want to know how come the DHA presentation didn't mention that cannabis helps with asthma, depression, PTSD, schizophrenia? I can speak to that personally. I'd like to, I'd like a better understanding of the word "may" have effects, are these guesses? And I keep hearing the, from the prevention community, I think this speaks to my just say no and drugs are bad and are not, and is not a realistic approach to anything, let alone drugs. Please move away from just say no and teach my child and our children how to use these things safely. And to be cognizant of the increase in psychosis, it is very real, it is happening. And of course, we need more studies, but it's your regulated market that's actually fueling higher THC rates, not illegal ones. Your market created and fostered it. So the fact that this is happening, and again, we need more studies, the regulation goes back to your competitive legal market and speaks to even more of a reason to teach my kid in this community how to use these things safely instead of just say no. Just say no is why we're sitting here saying that we don't have enough data, don't have enough studies, and have no real understanding and have people from, who are on my tax dollars payroll, coming up and talking from a one-sided, not open-minded approach to how do we handle these kinds of crises in our community. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great day.
Great. Thank you, McKenzie, appreciate your comments. Okay.
Okay, and I believe we have one more caller.
All right.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, Gordon Supervisors. I honestly couldn't say it better than the previous caller in just critiquing and the presentation from before, but really thought it was adorable at certain points, about adorable as the old-school DARE program that I used to, that I went to school with and had to work and ended up finding after several conclusive studies found that it provided no decrease, no meaningful substantial or even statistically significant decrease in drug use, may have actually encouraged people to use drugs. So kudos to reminding us of that old, that old war on drugs relic. But I had a couple of serious questions. Now that we've had a report back on the health and safety considerations relating to cannabis, first, are we going to have a report on the positive uses on health and safety for cannabis? And two, are we going to have any report back on the health and safety considerations relating to alcohol as well as tobacco? Preferably separate presentations, given the fact that alcohol kills no less than 10,000 people on a yearly basis. Cigarettes are attributable to over, what, almost 500,000 deaths in, just in this country alone? And then zero deaths related to, or directly connected to cannabis, mind you, which I appreciate that nobody in this, that presented today tried to make that claim. But just wanted to, I really do want to know, are there going to be any report backs on the health and safety considerations relating to alcohol or tobacco?
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thanks, Keon. I know we are going to have a report back on July 12th as relates to cannabis, and Supervisor Serna had asked about that very early in the presentation, so we will have on the health impacts and the, I guess, positive health impacts perspective. So that'll be on July 12th. And we'll also have on that day, the, for board's consideration, as at least as it currently stands, the measure that we talked about previously, so that'll be as a part of the agenda as well. Is that accurate? Okay. And certainly understanding requests on alcohol and tobacco. But as relates to cannabis, we will have that presentation that you referenced on July 12th, coupled with this other item relates to, a measure that may go before the voters. All right. Any other callers?
No, that was it.
Okay.
I was triple-checking the queue, because sometimes folks slip in, and I closed it when he was finished talking.
Very good. Okay, thank you to McKenzie and to Keon for your comments. And with that, thanks to our presenters. Board members, any other comments for today's purposes? We will return back with this item, now having had presentations on different aspects on two different occasions, so July 12th, and we should allow sufficient time for that in our agenda planning, so.
I also want to add that that July 12th presentation on the medical benefits of cannabis is contingent upon us locating someone who is available on that day. We will make every effort to make that happen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If the, if our executive team is having any difficulties, please reach out to my office, we can assist.
Great, thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay. And, and with that, just in light of them, I guess you will have a draft, turn to council for a moment, because there certainly has been indication by a number of board members that they're interested in pursuing this, it does require a four-fifth vote if it's to go to the, to the ballot. Will you have then before board's consideration, I guess, a draft measure? Because that's, it's going to have to be ready to go, right?
Yes, the staff has the ordinance, and we will have, I believe, the draft measure ready for the 12th.
Okay, all right. Because it would be introduced on the 12th, it would have to come back on the 26th, no?
No, it's not that kind of ordinance.
Oh, it's not?
It's, it's basically, the measure is what needs to be put on the ballot, but you don't have to introduce it and continue it and pass it, because you're not passing the ordinance. It would be the voters that actually pass the ordinance.
But we still, you actually have until the 26th, do you not, though, technically?
Yes.
So.
We have, till past the 26th. I don't know the exact, I think it's August 4th, but, yeah.
And I was saying the 12th, because I was under the same understanding as you, that we had to introduce it and wait, so.
Okay, so it may come back, depending upon, again, we're going to be meeting the 12th and the 13th, and again, on the 24th and?
Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven. So it will be at one of those dates, and again, we'll shoot for the early, earlier July meetings, but again, depending upon availability for folks and what has to go in for board's consideration and needs to be fully developed if we're going to take it up, so. Okay, yeah, because I was understanding the impression as you, and it had required that introduction, and two weeks before you could actually go forward with that. So, okay. Any other questions on procedure-wise? So we will see this back in July. Again, thank you to our presenters, and that concludes the hearing on this. We'll see you back. Next item, please.
Okay, item five is the adoption of the 2022 Sacramento County Extreme Heat Hazard Annex and Extreme Cold and Freeze Hazard Annex.
Okay. Mary Jo, good afternoon.
May I adjust the height here?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and members of the board. Excuse me, Mary Jo Flynn Nevens, and I'm your Chief of Emergency Services. I'm here to present to you an updated plan for the county, actually, two plans, for the county's response to extreme weather. These plans are consistent with the recently released Extreme Temperature Plan from the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services and are consistent with federal planning guidance. We have worked closely with the National Weather Service Office in Sacramento. In fact, I have Courtney Carpenter here from the National Weather Service Office, should you have any questions for her. We've worked with them over the last several years to test their new weather products related to heat and cold. We have incorporated these new models and data into our planning documents. These new models align with your board's priorities for climate adaptation and sustainability in that these models bring consideration of local climatology and CDC health data risk. We also have worked with our cities, local partners, and involve departments such as public health, human assistance, child, family, and adult services, and agriculture to provide comment on the plans. We've also presented the plans to the Operational Area Council and solicited feedback and comment. All comments received on the plans to date have been incorporated into the final plans presented to you today. Our goals with these plans were to simplify and expedite decision-making so that communication with the public regarding threats from extreme weather and the actions necessary to maintain health are clear and more easily understood. The plan has been simplified from four phases of activation to three, and this is consistent with the state's plans. Basically, we have a readiness phase of activation where our office will convene our stakeholders and provide public education, a watch phase where we're getting notification from the local weather service office that we should anticipate extreme weather of some sort, and we will start coordination calls with all of our stakeholders and ready logistics for distribution as needed. And then the warning phase of both of these plans, which will be our actions to implement the plan. Before you is a sample of the National Weather Services Experimental Heat Risk. This is a product that we have been working with them for several years to test within our office. Our previous plan relied on the heat index, which only ranks high temperatures and humidities, and caused us to have that 105-degree daytime temperature, 75-degree low temperature. By moving away from the heat index and moving to the Experimental Heat Risk Model, it offers an alternative holistic solution that uses high and low temperature forecasts, but it adds data from the CDC, heat health thresholds, local climatology, it takes into consideration the duration of heat, and the heat island effect in urban areas. This is something the previous heat index did not do. The National Weather Service Experimental Heat Risk Product graphically displays where the most severe heat will be within the county. So we can see at a glance, in these examples here, the northern portion of the county had more extreme heat that past summer. And response efforts are only one component of an overarching emergency management focus to extreme weather. Pre-disaster mitigation activities identified in the county's local hazard mitigation plan are necessary to reduce or eliminate the exposure and threat of heat-related issues.
Mary Jo, before you leave that slide, could I just take you back there for just a second? Just looking at the middle, the Sunday outline there with the magenta and the red, I'm curious about that band that runs down through the eastern portion of the county where you've got, in fact, I have a different graphic, I think, than the one you, no, I guess it's similar, where you've got an area that's high heat surrounded either side by, I guess, a less severe category or vice versa. So what is, what is it there? Is, you know, you don't have an urban setting, you've got a rural setting, you've got some more maybe irrigated parcels of land? I'm just curious, though, you got that, you see what I'm talking about there?
I'll rely on, on Ms. Carpenter's expert advice on this, but I believe it has to do with the influence of the Delta and the Delta Breeze that usually has an impact on cooling the southern portion of the county.
But, but you got that band, I'm talking, you see that?
On the, on the?
Sunday chart there.
Eastern side?
Yes, on eastern side, yeah. I'm not, I get the Delta, but you're pretty far away from the Delta there, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I just make an observation?
Yeah.
It's really not a band, per se, for Sacramento County, it's just that we're seeing a portion of the larger area. So if you were to expand out, it's the, it's a leading edge of it, but it's not a band that's specific to the county, do you understand? Because the magenta extends to outside, to, looks like Sutter, El Dorado, Amador, San Joaquin, and other points east and north. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I, but I guess, I just, you got the, rather than being, you know, contiguous, you've got this break in between the two colors, or that's what, you know, the leading edge, or so. What's happening there meteorologically or otherwise that you would make a declaration for certain areas?
I'll let Courtney Carpenter from the National Weather Service Sacramento Office answer that.
Okay. Hi, Courtney.
Hi. So the magenta heat risk takes into account the duration of the heat. So when you get the red level, which is kind of your highest level of calculation, for 36 hours or more, it goes to the magenta. So when you get to the magenta, we're talking your long-duration events. Typically, on the east side of the county into the foothills, there's kind of a thermal belt, what we call, and it, the heat is trapped kind of in the hills and it doesn't cool down at night. So typically, when you get those purples, we're seeing very high heat during the day and then not much cooling at night. So if you were to zoom out, you'd see kind of a purple area that delineates kind of the foothills where we're not cooling at night for this particular event.
Of course, you haven't hit the foothills quite there. I mean, you're, you're just at the toe of the foothills.
Right, but this is just kind of a one event. It will differ from event to event as the temperatures differ, and as Mary Jo mentioned, sometimes we get that Delta breeze.
Wind patterns, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's very cool.
So the magenta level is indicating really your long duration, more than one day. It's 36 hours or more of.
So if you look at real estate, it's a little cooler in that one section of Harold than it is in the other.
If you want to be cooler, live closer to the Delta.
Oh, yeah, I get that. Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you, Phil. Okay. Go ahead, Mary Jo.
The heat risk criteria is before you. It displays the 2012 criteria that we were relying on and what is now included in our 2022 plan. Basically, we are going to be relying on utilizing the National Weather Services issuance of an extreme heat warning. And we will also take into consideration using that Experimental Heat Risk Model, whether or not it's at that magenta level for three or more days. Additionally, we have criteria that balances those issuances of warnings, where if they issue a partner email, advisory, watch, or a warning in addition to other factors that contribute to heat health risks within the community, such as abnormal human medical emergencies and mortality, abnormal animal mortality, or an electrical supply issue that impacts electrical supply and distribution within the county or is completely disrupted due to temperatures, we will take action. And typically, the actions that we take start with cooling center activities, but they also include activities from DCFAS, who provides outreach to seniors and provides education about how they can care for themselves in their home, and resources that they might need to continue cooling. It includes pre-warning activities, so warning is a product issued by the National Weather Service. And before we get to that point, DHA has in the past opened their lobbies to make motel, and making motel vouchers available, and these are just important tools in a comprehensive response. We coordinate with the Department of Agriculture, and it's important in ensuring the health of animals and livestock and ensuring that the community's agricultural products are monitored. And then finally, we have public education from public health, which is critical to ensuring that all residents have access to timely information so that they can make individual decisions about their health and their needs.
So could I just ask you then, on the 2012 plan, it actually built in some degrees Fahrenheit, the range, you know, where you triggered it at a certain excessive temperature, and then also if it didn't go below a certain low temperature? So that no longer, I mean, that fits into the equation, but that's no longer?
It is considered, the high and low temperatures are considered as part of the National Weather Services Experimental Heat Risk Product. So we're no longer relying on those very specific thresholds, we're relying on the product distribution from the National Weather Service.
So what is the lowest high temperature that could actually trigger you into this calculation?
I don't know precisely the lowest temperature, but I can tell you that it is seasonally adaptive.
Okay.
And that's the, the local climatology portion of that. Basically, in the shoulder seasons, we will see heat warning products come out at lower temperature thresholds if there's longer duration. And the heat risk model will go to either red or magenta at lower temperatures, let's say in May, than it would in July when people have had an opportunity to acclimate to those temperatures.
Okay, that helps, that's very useful. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you. Actually, this is pretty fascinating as far as, you know, taking into account more things than just a temperature. than just a temperature, and I can see why they work. I guess, bottom line, I hate to get ahead of your presentation, but what I would be interested in seeing, and tell me to shut up if you already have a slide that says this later, is that in 2021, under the 2012 plan versus the 2022 plan, which one would have put people into a shelter situation or a warming and cooling situation more?
So in, I went back a slide, in 2021, we were at our old plan thresholds for this. So you had 105 degrees on Friday and 99 on Monday.
No, no, no. What I'm asking is, let me be more clear, you know, over the course of the year, under the old plan and the new one, I know the new one wasn't in place, which one would have gone into effect more often?
The new plan will have gone into effect more often. We used it last week.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm looking for more than, you know, a larger sample.
On average, over the last five years, there have been, on average, eight heat warnings per summer season from the National Weather Service. That can vary and be 12 warnings, zero warnings, but on average, over the last five years, we've had about eight.
And we don't have the analysis that if we were applying the new criteria of what that would have been?
I can work with the National Weather Service and get you an analysis.
That would be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just one follow-on question, because again, it occurred a few summers ago, and it was coupled with a very hot period, but when we had the fires and the smoke really laid in in Sacramento County, and obviously, we got, you know, some very high readings relative to the toxins and so forth, but in the conditions for folks that had asthma and other compromised, you know, breathing capacities, but the, does that get factored into, because of smoke, again, it can hold the temperature down, but it can also hold the heating longer, so does that get factored in there? I mean, cloud cover can have a similar effect, you might not get to the, you know, and I see Courtney shaking her head, yes. So I guess, curious, so it takes into account those factors, too?
It does, and we've worked with the Public Health Office and the Sacramento Air Quality Management District. They're actually working on a plan for our area that we've been participating with them on, so has the Public Health Office. And we do have criteria when smoke is impacting the county on when we would open up what's called a cleaner air center. And so we have some guidance and some policy around that when we would open, which is slightly different than a cooling center, but what we've seen in the summer conditions is that they're often intertwined and opened together.
Okay, but it could be separate as well?
They could be separate. If we had a smoke event without a weather event, we would open as a specifically cleaner air center. And I can't remember which year, it might have been 2020, where we opened a cooling center first and then transitioned to a cleaner air center.
And that's a, that's a separate annex, the clean air?
It's right now a separate document. It is, I promise I won't bring absolutely everything to this board's consideration, but that is a separate set of guiding documents that we're working through, and that Public Health has really been leading.
Okay, very good, thanks. Okay.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about new data that I personally have been quite excited about, because I feel it allows me to make better decisions when it comes to determining whether or not to open centers. And that is the probabilistic data that the Weather Service is starting to release. So we have been a beta test partner with the National Weather Service Sacramento Office on utilizing this data, which still, in my understanding, has to be done by hand. So we're very lucky to have this partner information. But what is new to the cold elements of the plan, and will be incorporated a little bit with heat as well, is the probability or likelihood of reaching certain temperatures. So in our past plan, we would look for forecasts of 32 degrees or lower for cold weather temperatures. And often, we wouldn't see it, or we'd be right on the cusp, it would be 33 or 34, 35 degrees. This plan, basically, when it's 35 degrees forecast for three days, we're going to start our weather calls with our stakeholders and partners. And if we see forecast temperatures at 32 degrees, or if the National Weather Service is telling us that the probability of reaching 32 degrees is greater than 50% over three days' time, then we'll, we'll take action to open warming centers. So this allows us to have a little bit more certainty with our actions, because we are committing resources when we do open these, these centers. So that criteria in comparison, the 2012 to the 2022 criteria, basically, what we have added is that additional probabilistic information, where any of that information at 50% greater chance, 50% or greater chance of happening at 32 degrees or lower for three consecutive days, it just gives us more time in decision-making. And I also wanted to bring to the board's attention a slide you have seen before in our continuum of sheltering services. So sheltering, again, is just one small part of what we do when it comes to weather emergencies, but there are actions that are taken by many departments during normal weather considerations. And in significant inclement weather, many departments will take additional actions. I know that's really tiny and hard to read, my apologies. But a lot of the actions that DHA will take will include additional weather monitoring, they'll provide outreach and motel vouchers, and that motel voucher program has been highly successful compared to the low rates that some of the cooling and warming centers get in terms of utilization. And that is my last slide. If there's any questions that you may have, I just wanted to let you know that we are asking for your approval to adopt these two plans, and I will, no questions.
Great, thanks, Mary Jo. Well, thank you for your presentation, thanks for our friends from the National Weather Service. Probably your first time here, too, Courtney, is it? So we're welcome, we welcome you as well. Board members, any questions of the presentation? Seeing, seeing, none, any callers?
We do not have any callers.
Okay, all right, so we have a staff recommendation before us.
Move adoption.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the staff recommendation, adopting the operational area extreme heat and extreme cold hazard annexes. And with that, thanks to all the presenters, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Thank you all. Okay, next item.
Item six is to adopt the Public Safety and Justice Agency Advisory Committee Charter.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Chair Natoli, Board Supervisors, so Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive for the Public Safety and Justice Agency, and I'm bringing you this evening a framework in the form of a charter for an advisory committee for the PSJA. I'll be using that term, but that's the Public Safety and Justice Agency. So I have a PowerPoint we'll be going through as well. Okay, so general role and responsibilities. First, a recap of the PSJA. It's about lead responsibility for the county's roles in the criminal justice system from the CEO's office perspective. So this is to oversee departments of the coroner, public defender, conflict criminal defender, and probation, but also acting as a liaison directly with the sheriff's office, with the district attorney, as well as the law library, and coordinating with the Office of Inspector General, Superior Court, Criminal Justice Cabinet, and the Community Corrections Partnership. And a role of PSJA's to direct and coordinate activities of related advisory bodies. And as you know, there are a number of, well over 70 county-wide bodies, committees, boards, et cetera. About, between 10 and 12 are criminal justice-related. And just a couple examples, and you've heard about them a lot through the budget process or otherwise, the Community Corrections Partnership, CCP, the CCP's Advisory Board, Criminal Justice Cabinet and their work groups, the Phab or FAB, Public Health Advisory Board, the Alcohol and Drugs Advisory Board with the Criminal Justice Committee, Mental Health Advisory Board with some subcommittees, et cetera. So there are quite a number of those. And really, what we're looking for here is, is something coming from a different place, but also very important, as you, the board, talked about back in August and again in October, was that this office, that this agency look through everything we do with a lens of race and health equity. And the reason I'm here now is to provide a community input structure to you as the Board of Supervisors. And the reason is it's so critical that we get the community voice in ways not heard from before. So it will be a bit unique, which I will cover in a bit more detail. Most importantly, really, I believe, is this is hearing from individuals with lived experiences from a variety of backgrounds. So the purpose for the committee, again, as mentioned in August, was to really get direct community engagement for the PSJA's goals. And those really four key goals are reducing adult jail day population, reducing recidivism, increasing services, and increasing efficiencies in the criminal justice system. I'm actually going to put all of these up here, okay. And again, back to that history, on August 10th, 2021, there was a resolution that established the Public Safety and Justice Agency, and it added for county staff to come back before you, back in a separate resolution with the proposed committee structure. And again, in order to allow for community collaboration and provide community voice into the dialogue around those really four key priorities that were mentioned.
And Eric, that's what you're bringing us today. So from the direction that came out of August 10th, this is what, what you are recommending to us, but we haven't acted on anything in between that time and this time. We talked about it in October, about wanting to see it happen, but, so this is, so this is that follow-on recommendation through
That's correct, sure.
County Executive's Office. Okay, thanks.
Yes, the, the direction was to bring back a framework specific to an advisory board for the Public Safety and Justice Agency. Yes, and so since then, months of work have gone on, really, a lot of various discussions I've had with individuals, agencies, organizations, really to see how is it that, what is the mechanism going to be in the structure so we can get that community dialogue? And that's what I have for you here today. So for this advisory committee, really, the authority of the committee, as mentioned back in August, it is advisory, and it's advisory to the Public Safety and Justice Agency. So this is one of those unique factors I mentioned, this is actually an advisory committee to county staff. And so the county staff will be myself, and then representatives from all of the various criminal justice agencies within the county. And then the responsibilities will be really for the agency Deputy County Executive to, through the CEO, report the committee activities back to you, as the Board of Supervisors, on at least an annual basis. Okay, so here we get into the actual structure, proposed structure for you. And really, the charter here, in that you have attached in the board, with the board letter, it outlines the deputy county executive as the chair, meetings being at least quarterly, agenda item processes, as well as that these meetings will be closed to non-members. These are a few key points. I want to spend a little bit of time about this section about it being closed to non-members. There are a few very important reasons for that, in my opinion. Like I said, by design, this is different than many of the other criminal justice and public health-related bodies that have numerous avenues for public input. And I don't want this body to be duplicative of that work, that great work, that a lot of our various already existing bodies are doing and will continue to do. Also, this one is unique in that this committee will be advising county staff directly, and that community voice, in this case, is of our very personal stories. So what I mean by that is, I think it's important that county staff really have, have the ability to hear honest, open, deep dialogue about issues very near and dear to the variety of backgrounds that we're going to have at the table, so that criminal justice leaders can make thoughtful decisions on policies and procedures based on those very personal stories. And I do have feedback from a variety of organizations and individuals that really felt as if they haven't really had a seat at the table for a variety of reasons of various boards and commissions, because, or have chosen not to, because their stories are so personal. And also, I believe it to be a best practice for this type of very, again, unique type of advisory committee, to be able to have those, those deep discussions, to be not open to non-members. That does not mean, there cannot be public workshops tied to this committee where we can hear from all of the, all of the community and all of the public, but for the regular standing, standing meetings, that is what's proposed before you here. We're really looking for a cross-section of representation, and to ensure we have as much of representation from these variety of groups here. The committee will have up to 15 members, comprising, again, of most of these areas. And so we have behavioral and behavioral health, medical and public health, civil rights organizations, educational field, mentors, formerly incarcerated individuals, crime survivors, recidivism reduction organizations, clergy, and business owners, neighborhood associations, as well as philanthropic organizations. The members will, as proposed, serve for a two-year term on this. Now, there will be leads or representatives from every criminal justice organization in the county, but they will be there as staff to hear from the membership. So the committee members will not be comprised of any actual county, agency, or government.
Yeah, oh, sure. Somebody's done them, right? Thank you, Eric, I appreciate that. So, so that the departments that you directly oversee will have representation, what about any of the agencies? I didn't see the agencies you liaise with, sheriff, DA, I mean, what were your thoughts about that?
My thoughts are that they would also have representation, I think
But not be a member of the advisory, I've got it.
Absolutely. So, for example, the four specific departments that I oversee, probation, coroner, public defender, et cetera, will be there, but as well as, we need representation from the district attorney's office, from the courts, as well as the sheriff's office.
Got it. So, I have a follow-on question, and again, I don't want to get ahead of your presentation, but, and I know that you, certainly you'd briefed, at least this member of the board, before the printed information came out, so obviously a chance to review that, but, and you've talked about the uniqueness of this, Eric, but the, I guess, I'm still in my own mind thinking about, you know, certainly what you want to encourage, and it's understood, you want folks to be, you know, not just forthright, but honest, and to share whatever their experience, but their thoughts and so forth. But by making this advisory to, you know, our administrative structure, then, one, the board is not involved, so therefore, it doesn't, not involved in the sense that we, we are not making the appointments, I guess you and/or a committee of executive staff are making those determinations. But, you know, we have a number of advisory committees, and they advise, and they are under the Brown Act, they are, there is, you know, a public setting, and I get it, that you want to maintain some, I don't know if it's confidentiality, because if somebody's going to share it in a room of 15, including county staff, that's not really a confidential, it may be a closed door. And, and so it's going to be very, very filtered back to this board, again, and maybe not advising us directly, and, you know, we do have other structures that advise this, advise this board, but, I don't know, that kind of has a bit of a veil, and I'm not saying secrets, it's a bit of a veil attached to it, I mean, and I assume that's intentional, that's my word, not your word. And I think in light of a lot of what we're trying to achieve in this county, certainly in looking at our service delivery, looking at the challenges we face for the general population, but certainly for specific segments of our community and our, you know, and populations, you want to have good advice, you want folks that are going to be, again, candid with you, and, and, you know, be willing to participate. and, you know, be willing to participate. And yet, everything that comes back to this board will come certainly via your professional role, your professional role as the county executive. And, I don't know, I just, again, the charter, I'll just, I'll say this, that when we had this conversation, you know, 10 months ago, again, not knowing, it was my predetermination as one member of this board, an advisory committee structure along these lines, certainly I want the cross-section of representation, we want that to be real. I don't know that, if you'd asked me then, and I'm going to say it right now, is that, say that that was just going to be this closed-door advisory committee that will be broad enough, it'll certainly have county representation there, but it won't be open. And again, I just, I get, that challenges me a bit in my thinking about this. Not even respectful to what you're bringing us, to the thought that's gone into this. In fact, we have other opportunities for folks to participate. I don't know, it just seems kind of a bit of a half-step in the right direction, but I'm not, you know, again, I haven't had a lot of experience in that regard. And I understand committees and their ability to work, and you can roll up your sleeves, you can be a little more free-flow discussion. Nothing wrong with that, in, you know, in the right setting. But I think in light of kind of the focus that's on the issues that are, you know, encumbered by the agencies and the amount of resources this county puts towards it, the amount of community interest from a lot of different perspectives. Again, I just, I wanted to share that, because again, as I thought about this, and we have been in a conversation since we briefed about it, and, you know, I'm respectful of what you're bringing us, and certainly going to listen to you and to the reasons why, and hear from my colleagues. But again, if you'd asked me in August, is this going to be, I would say, no. It's going to be a Brown Act committee, and people will be able to come into the room together, and, you know, certainly how those folks are selected, how they serve. You know, that structure was all kind of left open. I guess I, this is just a little different than what I would have maybe expected, so.
Yes, yes, Chair, absolutely. And that, I guess that is the point I bring before you, that is a bit different, because we do have the recently developed Community Review Commission, you know, direct oversight. We have the Criminal Justice Cabinet, we have the Community Corrections Partnership to get public feedback regularly in a variety. And I guess I would specifically say, I heard from mostly crime survivor groups, Justice Center, quite a few, that said this is one thing that's been missing, is to be able to have those very intimate, personal discussions. And that it'll be reported out on the themes, the things we're talking about, but not the individual, personal stories. And that's been one thing that's precluded a number of, to get the full diverse background of those who have some sort of, you know, very, have been deeply impacted through some point within the criminal justice system that's been, has kept them from coming to publicly speak in some other areas, or they feel that there are certain groups, organizations that sort of take over other bodies that have made them uncomfortable. You know, I've heard a variety during my own listening sessions, and that's why this was specifically crafted this way. Not to take away from the other very important bodies that are open to the public and very, very much public input and meetings open to the entire public.
Yeah, I was just going to weigh in as well. One of the groups that's been historically missing from our criminal justice committees and advisory bodies that are Brown Act committees is the voice of victims. And I think that it's a critical voice that has been missing and that we need to include it. And I think that doing it this way will allow victims to feel more comfortable in participating. And I think that's why we're proceeding in this way.
Okay, Supervisor Frost, thanks.
Well, I just wanted to share from my personal experience, Supervisor Natoli. I appreciate that you've been sensitive to the crime victims. I have, let's see, how do I, I have a relative, I'll say, who, someone broke into her house and held her at knife point. And he ended up going to prison, and he threatened to kill her when he got out of prison. And it literally changed her, it changed her life in a drastic way for a while. I mean, and I think your sensitivity to the crime victims is really important, because there are, you know, every, there are different kinds of victimization. We, you know, there are inmates that are victims, there's also crime victims. So there's two sides to that story, and I think it's really important to have the wisdom of both sides, all sides. And so I appreciate that you're, even in that room with all those people, it might be hard for them, the crime victim, to share, I would imagine, knowing what I know. So I, you know, I appreciate that you're sensitive to that. And I support the privacy so that they can actually all have that conversation, that deep conversation. Thank you.
Just a quick response, I mean, I've thought about this a bit, that, again, you want folks to, you know, consider participating. They still got to go through a vetting process. It sounds like you're going to be making the appointments to the committee. You're going to, you've got assistance from a group that you have confidence in to review the applications. But, again, you want folks to think about participating and to do that in a way that obviously is sensitive to whatever traumatic or bad experience or terrible experiences they've had to inform this broader discussion. But on the other hand, it's, you know, no secret, you're going to come into a room with others from other backgrounds and viewpoints. You're going to have, you know, lead county agency representatives in a room. So this is not, I say, there's a bit of a veil. It's a veil to, I guess, a broader public viewing of this. But nonetheless, you're still, if you're going to go out there and tell your story to, you know, Supervisor Frost, to inform others about, you know, impacts and considerations, it's, you know, if you're going to step forward and offer your time and, I guess, and to, you know, bear some of that story, you know, you're going to acknowledge that going in. I mean, if that's what you choose to do, nobody's forced to say anything at the meetings, I guess. So, again, I just, I'm puzzled about this. And again, I can understand the implications and maybe the hesitancy for what you've stated and, you know, maybe what Ann said as well and Sue explained. But this, you know, you're going to, anybody who's going to volunteer to serve and if they're selected to do so, I think has to know that if called upon to share and if they choose to do so, you know, 15-member group is no small group, plus other folks, you know, closed door or not, you can have, maybe have 25 or 30 people in a room you're going to share with. And I guess if you're comfortable with that setting, irrespective of the points of view that are represented there, then you'll, you know, contribute in the way that you choose to do that as a member of that committee. But, again, I wouldn't see it as being something where people are going to, you know, think that they're going to go in there and tell the story. And, you know, if they want people to hear it, then you're going to have an audience there of colleagues, peers, and others. So, County Council.
Can I ask the board to take a one-minute recess? I need to confer with the county executive.
Sure.
Sorry.
Okay. But take one minute, enough. How about we take five minutes? We've been here for three hours, so, five-minute recess.
I call the board supervisors back in the session after a brief recess. Better call and roll, establish a quorum, please.
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Desmond.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. You going to resume where we left off, or is there any need for any follow-on from Council?
Not at this time. I think we can finish the presentation and then go from there.
Okay, very good. Okay, good. Thank you, Lisa. Thanks, County Executive. Eric, back to you.
So this was, the proposed membership process is that candidates, interested candidates, would submit their interest through a member applicant form, basically given their name, contact information, organization they would be representing to be a resident of Sacramento County. And then I would review these, but I would utilize the Alliance for Safety and Justice. This is actually what they do, and this is their area of expertise nationally, is to bring groups together for these very difficult, sometimes fragile, but very important discussions, to really form what they call a blueprint for shared public safety. And then after that process with...
Sorry, Eric, give pause to Supervisor Kennedy right at that point.
Just for a little bit more view into that, who they are, other than a national organization. I mean, could you just expand upon that?
Yes, so the Alliance for Safety and Justice is a nonpartisan organization that works all across the nation. They have a California branch called Californians for Safety and Justice. And they work on a blueprint for shared public safety, which is having the voice of all of the various segments of the community to come together and talk about really a couple things. How to make communities safer and how to reduce the harms that the criminal justice system has done and can do. And so that's their area of expertise.
Thank you.
Do they have a, just a statewide branch? Do they have a local branch? I know some of them weighed in here at one time, certainly, you know, called in, and maybe some are here. Do they work in specific communities, or is this a statewide organization based out of Sacramento, or where?
So they're, they're actually based out of back east. It's their headquarters. So they do have the California branch, which is Californians for Safety and Justice, which, but their national organization is based in either DC or New York.
Okay. And where's their statewide branch based out of?
They have one in Los Angeles. They do a lot of work in the Los Angeles area, and they do have one up here in the Sacramento area.
Okay, very good. Okay, thanks.
And then the county executive, designated, would make the final appointments to the committee based on the interest that came in. And the Alliance for Safety and Justice uses a scorecard method to really ensure that on that last slide, we're getting as much representation of these areas, as well as the level of interest they have, and then their stated reasons for having interest on being on the committee. And then the proposed timeline would be these next steps. So the member recruitment and application process would take us between July through August, establishing the member roster by the end of September, and then hoping for a kickoff meeting for the committee sometime between September and October.
All right, thank you, Eric. Questions of Mr. Jones at this juncture? All right, I don't see any more. Then, I don't have any sign-up in the chambers. Do we have callers on this?
We do actually have one caller, or two.
Okay, all right. If you'll stand by, Eric, we're going to take the calls.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. This is Liz with Decarcerate Sacramento. I just briefly wanted to call in and ask a few questions that I'm still left with after the Mr. Jones's presentation. Thank you. I'm still sitting here not being, I'm personally not clear on what the goal of the committee is. I know that, you know, you say that you're to advise, you know, your agency and to engage with the community, and I'm not sure what that engagement means, and also just overall what the goal of this committee is. And so, for years now, you know, the county has been saying that it's committed to creating and implementing a comprehensive jail population reduction plan. And unfortunately, I don't believe the county has accomplished this yet. So our hope was last year in August, when we worked so hard to make sure that the creation of this new agency with, you know, the stated goal of jail population reduction, included a committee, you know, we imagined something a little bit different from this, because, you know, we really wanted to look at other counties and what's been successful there. And really, like, really, we really noticed that, you know, like, the ATI Working Group in LA County, for example, brought, you know, was public meetings brought together, all relevant stakeholders and community members really come up with a plan, an actionable, measurable plan for each county department, on what, you know, prevention policies and what actual policies can be implemented that will result in a reduced jail population. And so I also just wanted to say, as a crime survivor who's also lost family too, that I definitely understand the importance of protecting the rights of victims. I also know that you're aware that, you know, there are crime survivors that don't identify themselves as such, who are, you know, a part of these conversations. And while I do definitely respect the work of the Alliance for Safety and Justice and Californians for Safety and Justice, they mainly do work on the state and national level. And I wonder why their expertise is being brought in so heavily in the formation of this committee when a local organization would be more likely, more likely to be more appropriate, given their specific knowledge of the Sacramento County ecosystem. And I'm also wondering if the alliance would be paid, and just, I know you have a previous existing relationship with them, Mr. Jones, so it's just a little confusing to me. But yeah, I really, I really just want us to ask ourselves what the goal of this committee is and what it will accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And well, yes, Mr. Jones responds after we heard from the callers, so just, we have other callers?
Yep.
Okay.
Next caller, please. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, let me see, would you prefer to respond in between callers, or we want to just hear from the callers, Mr. Jones, and...
Your preference, Chair.
Okay, all right, we'll take callers.
Okay, sorry. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, board of supervisors. Yes, calling in to really ask, because there are a lot of unanswered questions, and just want to lift up what the previous caller had raised in terms of both goals and outcomes of this committee. And I would hope that, as the new deputy county executive over this brand-new agency that's being created, we are actually, the priority is to create measurable outcomes and goals strategically, and not just within the current culture of the Sacramento County Government, but actually within partnership with community members directly in this. And one of the key questions I have brought up from the charter itself is that, you know, this charter states that the purpose of this committee is to contribute to the community, but you all, but you all indicate that the meetings will be closed to the public. How exactly will this committee engage with the community without public meetings? And making those in compliance with the Brown Act? Second question is, you know, how specifically will advisory committee members be involved in the planning and decision-making concerning the county's jail system? The charter states that the committee will consider, discuss, and assist in the work of the PSJA, but the specifics are incredibly lacking. It leaves it wide open for this committee to just be a performative measure, which nobody, I think, in this, in this board, I would hope, wants that to be the case. Another question I have is, you know, will the board be able to attend these committee meetings, or at least like hear directly from advisory committee members themselves on any sort of recurring basis, rather than just, you know, as the charter states, the deputy county executive just reporting on those activities? Because again, shrouded in secrecy, I believe it was brought up by Chair Natoli, that it really makes it hard to actually have meaningful engagement with community members if it's all being done behind closed doors. It is also hard to actually build trust that this agency has the community's best interest in mind when it is being done behind closed doors, of course. And just want to also raise up to, you know, I'm curious to know how this proposed structure will help facilitate a comprehensive jail population reduction plan. This plan appears to be, you know, like, is that going to actually come from this committee? Or is it just coming from the deputy county executive and a couple of the law enforcement friends? I'm just curious, because I mean, this is, these are important questions that we should be asking publicly to do that. And I think it's, like, I think it's relevant that we are setting this committee upright and really making a concerted effort to make sure that as many people, particularly from population, like, you know, not just from those... from population, like, you know, not just from those directly impacted, but also their families, like, such as for families and incarcerated individuals as well who serve on this committee, because a lot of those, a lot of the folks that are, that we're hoping to address the issues on are still stuck inside, and they have no means of actually meaningfully participating within plans to actually, like, improve their own condition. So these are just a few of the questions that we have, and also curious too, the charter states that representatives from the probationist department and public offenders will attend committee meetings, but representatives from the district attorney's office, sheriff's department, and inspector general's office are only invited to attend. So I'm just curious if the two biggest law enforcement agencies will be directly involved in managing, like, that who are directly involved in managing the jail system are going to be required to attend, or if that's simply optional for them.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Keon. Appreciate your questions and comments. Thanks.
Hey, next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon, Board. This is Mackenzie Wilson, calling with Decarcerated Sacramento. I think I'm wanting to say that I don't believe enough engagement or community input was actually included into this plan. I'm gonna preface this saying, I think I'm getting a little tired of bringing expertise to this room for free, and it being dismissed as sometimes we don't know what we're talking about, or that we don't know how to get to programmatic and pragmatic solutions. I will still applaud these efforts, but I really wanna point out that this is a very watered, this is very watered down, and far from what this community asked for. I'm gonna read some notes from some colleagues, because we all couldn't make this meeting tonight, and it may include some already asked questions, but these things are important, and I look forward to responses, and hopefully maybe some changes to this proposed committee. As a friendly reminder, this committee came into being due to our advocacy last summer. We thank you for listening to us and implementing it, but the, but the current proposal does not fulfill the intention or need for a body to work alongside the PSJA to accomplish its goals. Thank you Supervisor Serna for proposing the specific language adding to the committee promise to the resolution on August 10th of last year. We also hope that you'll advocate today for a committee that will build a comprehensive plan for our jail, for our jail population reduction. In the PSJA advisory committee charter, it states that the purpose of this committee is to engage with the community. How does the county define this engagement? The charter states that the committee will consider, discuss, assist in the efforts of the PSJA, but where will the comprehensive jail population reduction plan be formed? If not here, then where and when? Can advocacy organizations be included on that list? We see philanthropic, sorry, organizations but not advocacy ones, and loved ones of incarcerated individuals could also be added, not just incarcerated folks. Will the Board of Supervisors be able to attend these meetings and hear directly from this committee? Why will the committee meetings not be Brown Act compliant, as we asked for them to be? How will the proposed structure help facilitate a comprehensive jail population reduction plan? How will the members of this committee be involved in the planning and decision-making around the jail system and jail population reduction plan? Why will the Alliance for Safety and Justice review the committee applications with the PSJA deputy CEO? Will they be paid for this work? Doesn't it make sense to actually have a more local or familiar with Sacramento County to be better fit for this role? I recognize they have an office here, but none of us know who they are, which means that they're not on the grassroots, nor on the ground, nor near anybody impacted. Why is the community selection process for the PSJA community advisory committee different from the AB 109 Community Correction Partnership Advisory Committee? For other county advisory boards, the board approves final selection of its members, not the CEO, so we really would like an explanation. Why are certain criminal justice partners invited to attend versus being required to attend? Allowing community to tell you what we think and then doing nothing that we, that we, you know, input is not community engagement. In fact, it's tokenizing, and it's extremely disingenuous. Listening is not about just checking a box. We're worried that the county will not succeed in reducing the jail population if they continue with the proposed plan as is. We think, we would like to take the time to reiterate that the PSJA committee should include all relevant department and agency stakeholders, that it should comply with Brown Act, and that it should be trained in racial, gender, and health equity, every single member, every single department head, every single person. And for comparison and reference, Alameda County passed a resolution last year that created a Care First Jail Last Committee with representations from nine county departments that is currently meeting monthly. I know that we kind of have that with the Human Services Coordinating Council, but I wanna say that sometimes those recommendations don't make it and fall upon deaf ears. So how can we create something that is realistically going to, like, focus and really get to alternatives to incarceration? And then also, Los Angeles County created the Alternatives to Incarceration Initiative in 2019. Their meetings are open to the public, and they carried out deep community engagement to create their Care First Jail Last Report, which outlines hundreds of specific recommendations for reducing the jail population in LA County. Yeah, that was it. And I'm gonna forward this to all of the Board of Supervisors members, just so that way you have these questions, and you have these references, and that you have these, hopefully, things that should be 100% added to our PSJA committee. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mackenzie. Okay.
And that concludes your callers.
Okay, all right, that concludes the callers. I see Supervisor Kennedy's in the queue, so, and then we'll go to Mr. Jones.
Yes, just, just, I know that you've been probably taking notes, and judging by your at-the-podium-job interview, I recall you did quite well following the questions, so not to worry there, but the, the last caller had, had a good point. Is there going to be a component of cultural competency that we're gonna make sure that, that the members of this, this body is afforded, if, if there's any training and so forth?
Yes, that's actually a component that I had already thought of through discussions and developing a comfort statement for the entire group, and working on, that was, is gonna be critical.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to hear that. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, all right, Supervisor Serna, then we'll go to Ms. Jones. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I assume we're, we're now at the point of board discussion deliberation.
Yeah, we are, but I just, Eric might wanna respond to a couple of questions that may be relevant to the conversation, if you're okay with that.
That's, that's fine, but, but, you know, I know there's a number of lingering questions, some of them very substantive and quite critical, so eager to hear from Mr. Jones, but I would just like to put out there, I think, maybe acting tonight might be a little premature. We might wanna take the time and, and continue this item until we can maybe do a deeper dive than just asking Mr. Jones to respond at the podium tonight.
Fair enough. Okay, good. So Eric, you have a chance to respond, and then we'll bring you back here for discussions about what to do next. Go ahead.
Yes, Chair, I wrote some notes down for a few questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so regarding the goal of the, the committee, it's really, it's about informing all of the criminal justice system partners, getting community dialogue around those four specific issues, or wherever they wanna go. It's not to develop necessarily the comprehensive jail population reduction plan, but it's to hear ideas on how to hit key, four key areas, which are to reduce the jail population, which a number of bodies are working very specifically on, and staff, as well as, again, reducing recidivism, increasing services to those incarcerated, or coming out, or on the front end for warm handoffs, and also hearing from the community how, on other criminal justice efficiencies, we can increase. So that's the purpose, but oftentimes, a body like this will dive into one area or another more specifically. Alliance for Safety and Justice is not expected to run this at all. They would be leveraging community partners. That's, that's the point, is to have community, local community, work through this. They would facilitate the initial meetings, and they are not paid at all. They, they don't, they, they receive their funding through philanthropy, through other sources. They would not be paid for this work. A couple other things, I think, is, oh, definitely open to public workshops, as I mentioned, and the decision-making piece, really, the goal here was for it to be advisory and not actually decision-making, because really, that would have to be something for the, the Board of Supervisors, and a lot of the areas where they're considering decision-making. And there was also one other question I wanted to respond to, was there some wording on who's required and who's invited? The required are those that are under my direct supervisions, supervision. The others would be, I'm, I'm certain I would be able to garner the partnerships from those others, but of course, the Public Safety and Justice Agency county executive is not in a position to be able to mandate the district attorney or sheriff to these. But certainly, we want them at the table, and I think they would be there.
Okay. Good. Well, thanks, Eric, for, for responding in brief to the, some of the questions that were posed. I think that's helpful. Lisa, did you wanna add anything? Again, I'm, folks wanna weigh in here, so.
I guess I'll add that I'm not sure what the board's going to do tonight. If you're planning on continuing, I don't need to explain anything further, but the decision of whether or not this is going to be a Brown Act body should be made at some point, and then the action of the board, or inaction of the board, will follow. If it's not a Brown Act body, there is no need to, the board should not and cannot create it, or direct the county executive to create it, and so that's the issue that we're faced with right now.
And, and if I just hearken back, and thank you for that information, hearken back to the resolution. Basically, we said in our resolution, August 10th, create the committee.
Correct.
Come back to us.
I'll, I'll take that one, Lisa, because that was a mistake on our part, and that is what we were conferring about. If, if this is not a Brown Act meeting, we do not need a resolution, and you will just, you know, let us know that you approve of the, the direction we're going. If you want it to be a Brown Act meeting, then we will have to come back, because we'll have to figure out the mechanism of how you all select members of this committee, because that wasn't considered in this presentation, because we were going to select the members. So if, if you would, would like this to be a Brown Act meeting, then we absolutely do need to continue this and come back. If you're okay with what we've presented with you, presented to you today, then I think we can proceed. We'll have to say with no resol, well, no, we still need to continue.
Well, I think we should just table, if, if that's the alternative, we can just table this, and bring it back if necessary, at a certain date.
Okay, because again, Supervisor Serna spoke already about, you know, some unanswered questions. It may go beyond just the Brown Act piece of this. I see Supervisor Desmond in the queue, so appreciate that, at least illumination on kind of what the issue is, and, and I may have touched on it a bit in my questioning prior to the recess, but Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm certainly always welcome additional discussion. I, I, I like what I've heard about the structure, and I guess one question I have is, if this board ever wanted to revisit this and convert it to a Brown Act body, certainly this board would reserve the right to do that at some, at some point in the future.
Absolutely, and, and I meant to say this earlier, but Mr. Jones and I are fully committed to bringing everything that this committee brings to us, to you, even if we aren't accepting some of the recommendations. We'll, we'll share with you what was presented, what we're doing, and why, so we'll be completely transparent with you.
Okay. Supervisor Kennedy?
So you said those last few words, "we'll be completely transparent." I think you've proven that, in just the fact that we're having this discussion today. There's no legal requirement for you guys to set up an advisory committee to staff and bring it to the board. So I, you know, that, that makes me feel very comfortable in your commitment to be transparent, so I, I don't have any problem going forward.
Okay. We've heard a couple of folks. Supervisor Frost, Supervisor Serna, any additional thoughts?
Oh, I can chime in. Certainly, it's not a reflection of not trusting the CEO or Mr. Jones, but I guess I have a little different take than Supervisor Kennedy. I think there's been enough obvious advocate interest, public interest, in what we intend to do around decreasing jail population. I think not to have perhaps a more welcoming, public-engaged structure, I guess, i.e. Brown Act body, sends a message. I'm not sure it's the right one, but it sends a message of, "Trust us," and I think, you know, we've already heard from a few folks that, for, for their reasons, for, you know, that they've communicated, there, there's skepticism of that. So I know that having a full-fledged Brown Act noticed committee requires more kind of administrative and legal investment of time, but, you know, I guess if I were to be asked today which one, which way to fall, I'd, I'd go with, with the Brown Act body.
Okay, very good. Supervisor Frost?
Mr. Jones, I have a question. We do have other, this committee or this body is an advisory to staff and would advise, basically, other committees that have already been set up, that are working in the law enforcement oversight, or whatever, advisory, it would be an advisory to us as well, right? And we have other committees that, that are like this, that are not Brown Act committees, but they, they're in an advisory capacity to staff. Is that correct?
This Supervisor Frost, this specific proposed framework would be advisory to, directly to county staff, which is different than a number of the other commissions and boards, which are oftentimes advisory to you. So that would be a key difference on this one, is this, this is advisory to the Public Safety and Justice Agency, and the Criminal Justice Department leads. And then we put in here that, that we would report to you at least once a year. But by design, this one was originally not advisory to the Board of Supervisors, rather, directly to county staff.
I just wanna say that I support the way, the vision that you have for this committee to get everyone to the table and, and give them a place where they can actually have these open conversations around all sides of the issue of these issues, of, you know, not only the inmates, but the victims, and the, you know, the continuum of care, and the jail population. And I, I support continuing this so that we can maybe have some further conversation around it, maybe? Maybe we're not quite ready. It sounds like we have some differing opinions, but I, I lean, I lean toward your idea of, of having this be an advisory to staff, and not directly to the board with the Brown Act, and so I would like to make a motion to continue it, or table it. I don't know if I should table it. Should I just?
Continue, it's fine.
I'm not sure how much time we need.
I'll just weigh in from the, I guess, legal perspective. If, if there's a majority of the board that believes that the discussion about whether it should be a Brown Act body or not, we should continue it. If the majority of the board feels like what staff is planning to do on its own, without input from the board, then you can just table it, or for tonight.
I have a question, just to follow on, Supervisor Frost's on the floor, but I know Anne's got in the queue, but, so the action in the staff report from August of last year, when we took this up, I don't think it declared that it was gonna be just a committee that would meet, I mean, this has been crafted over time. It may have been the intent, and that may have been part of it. So that's why my reference a little while ago about the, you know, the resolution, does somebody have that language? I don't have it in front of me. What, what the board directed in the staff report? Because we did, we even amended it within the context of the discussion.
I don't have that resolution handy either.
Yeah, it may have just been staff, or I don't know if it was actually involved a resolution or not. That's what I'm saying, Lisa, I don't know, but.
There was, there was a resolution.
Was a resolution.
And it is our belief that this fits with that resolution, but I don't have it right in front of me either.
Well, I don't have it in front of me, and it just occurred to me as we're having this conversation about whether we're comfortable or not. I spoke earlier on about what my takeaway was, without presuming that it was all done and said.
Mr. Jones has the resolution. Mr. Jones has the resolution.
Does he? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead.
Read it.
Well, again, if there's a pertinent part, then, yeah.
Resolution ordered, and this is dated August 10th, 2020, or it's referencing that meeting. Resolution ordered county staff to bring back a separate resolution proposing an advisory committee structure that allows for community collaboration, providing a community voice into dialogue on decreasing the jail population, and recognizing the importance of including voices of individuals with lived experiences and those most closely impacted by incarceration.
Okay. So, it's basically silent on how it would be conducting, I mean, obviously, you brought your best recommendation and all the justification and why, but you said you'll bring back an advisory committee with that intended goals and purpose, as you've stated previously, left it pretty much to, I guess, this discussion right here today about what we're going to do with it. So, anyway, I just.
If I could weigh in quickly, so if we, it would be nice to have some direction from you regarding whether you want it to be a Brown Act meeting or not, if we continue it, because the, what we bring back will look different depending upon what your wishes are.
Right.
We'll do whatever you want, we just.
Yeah, you and Lisa kind of said the same thing.
We need some guidance on, yes.
All right, so.
I just want to.
You saw the floor.
I guess I'll just say that I would like it to maybe start out as, as Mr. Jones has presented his vision for this, how it's going to function, and then later, if we find that we need to make it a Brown Act, we could come back and do that if we find that it's not accomplishing everything in the way that we want, we thought it would.
Okay. All right. Supervisor, okay, thank you for that. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Yeah, I'll just kind of maybe expand a little bit on what I said earlier, and I too have the resolution in front of me in digital form. And I'm glad that Mr. Jones read from the, I guess, what's the last whereas, correct?
Let me find it here. Yes, I read that portion.
Yeah. So, you know, and I think that, that sentence, you know, captures, obviously, what was intended from the board earlier, but it's, you know, to provide a community voice. And I guess the sticking point I have is, what's been proposed, and again, it's not a criticism of staff, I think you were trying to interpret what we directed earlier and come back with what you did, and that's, there's no fault in that, if we have a slight disagreement in the structure at this point. But it feels to me like an advisory body to an advisory body. It feels like you'd have an advisory body that informs staff, staff then comes and advises the board. And I don't know, is the intent to synthesize what is discussed or presented at the committee level, but it feels like, it almost feels like there's an unnecessary process and use of people's time between the board and the advice, I guess. And it's not, again, it's not a reflection of the fact that I don't believe you would bring back to us your sincere and genuine interpretation of what was discussed or directed, or, you know, the brainstorming that might take place at the committee. But it just, I guess it feels a little unnecessary to have it structured that way, and given the spirit of that last whereas, to provide community voice, to me, providing community voice arguably is perhaps best achieved without an unnecessary level of interpretation and, you know, advice that eventually arrives in front of us. I don't know if that makes sense to folks or not, it's getting late, but I guess that's where I'm going with this.
All right. Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to add, didn't you say, did you say that there could also be public meetings, even, did I hear that, or it seemed like you said a public process you could, would be happy to work with around this body?
Yes, Supervisor, that's always an option, and probably a good one, is to, if it were to hold this framework, to have public workshops on top of this, because it's difficult when there's a, these would resemble listening, intimate listening sessions, and if there is a Brown Act body, you can't then have them also do intimate listening sessions because you're now a Brown Act body. So, that was one reason for this construct. So, other options are to have open, public workshops for the members to hear from the public. But to make it a Brown Act body and then also have them do private listening sessions would be a violation of Brown Act, and that was a purpose for this. There can be separate listening sessions and separate workshops are all possibilities for us.
And so, you could, I'm thinking about, you know, equity and inclusion, and having everyone have an equal opportunity to have a voice, given the differing places that they come from. And if you had a body that could have those private conversations, but that also, on a regular basis, met with the public, you know, to report, they could even report out, they don't have to say who said what, or, you know, they could give updates on, you know, you know, their priorities or their vision for things, and then get public input that would inform their body even more so than even thought of prior, I mean, this is my thought.
Okay. All right. So, I hear kind of different vantage points on this. I would just say, and we can entertain a motion here in a moment if that's the desire of the board, I certainly would lean, and again, it may be a moot point, because depending upon, as explained by both the county executive and county council, if there's a desire to support the construct that's in the staff recommendation, then that would negate necessarily coming back with any further consideration by the board. But I'll just say that, again, and I said this earlier on this evening, when we were, in some of my earlier questions to Mr. Jones, that I think we are best served recognizing the balance here and not being insensitive to people's, again, as I said, traumatic and life-changing experiences in lots of different respects, and certainly wanting the value that I would hope would be instilled with the formation of a committee that would ultimately, ever how it's, you know, constituted, would, you know, serve in a capacity that, to bring information forward in some format, either through, directly through Mr. Jones and Ms. Edwards, and/or in a different way, if there was a point by this board. I just think the Brown Act, again, I guess in my experience, that, open meeting requirements, yes, they can certainly inhibit, as I said, maybe some of the, you know, the workings, but I think it is designed to, I think, facilitate certainly the, you know, community discussion, the community interaction, and I've never in my career found that to be anything to fear. It's not that, not that you want to interfere with good, solid work, and I recognize why the recommendations before us, but my leanings are, and again, if you ask me going out of the meeting on August the 10th last year, I would have told you, there's going to be every Brown Act committee, you know, how it gets appointed, and, you know, all the things that have been detailed in this charter were yet to follow on. And having thought about this, certainly heard the comments, certainly comments of my colleagues, I, again, I, you know, I would hope it wouldn't, from the get-go, if we used open meeting law requirements and did it in that format, certainly working through a vetting of the candidates for consideration of this board, but I think it only needs an advisory committee to the decision-makers in the county, at the top administrative levels and to at the board level regarding things that will impact the lives of folks throughout the community, you know, from a public safety and justice and all the various parties that have been mentioned. And so, my lean, you know, I lean strongly, I'll say this, towards the, to the, having the Brown Act apply and figuring out the committee structure, how they would be appointed from there. So, that's where I would, and again, it's not for lack of trust for folks that we do trust for very important things, and it's not to confuse the process or make it more difficult. I just think that, that's, I don't think, that's where, that's where I land on this. So, I've heard the comments, it sounds like there are two, maybe three, that were comfortable with the recommendation, we've talked about continuing it, and so, I'll go to my colleagues if you want.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
No, we do not, not yet. I just, I don't believe so. So.
I would suggest that if someone wants to make a motion to continue and bring it back as a Brown Act body, then that would be appropriate, and if you do want to do that, you can, and if you don't, then we don't need any action.
I'll make that motion.
To?
To continue it and bring it back as a Brown Act body.
Okay. The chair would second the motion. Supervisor Frost, you're punching the queue.
That's all right. I was, I was going to make another motion, but I don't know that I need to make a, I don't know.
You know, motion on the floor, but Supervisor Desmond?
Yeah.
Okay.
I really appreciate the conversation. I think this is a tough, it's a tough call. I really listening to Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Nataulie. Excellent points. I mean, it occurs to me, you know, we have an awful lot of these advisory committees, we don't have a forum like the one you're trying to design here, and I'm, and I do know that if you start down this road with this framework, we can always come back, I mean, we could always come back and revisit the decision we make or don't make and go to a Brown Act committee at that point. So, that's where I am with this. But it's a close call. I really respect the comments of my colleagues, but I prefer the framework that you've set out. I think that's a good way to start, anyway, so.
Is that a sub-motion?
There won't be a motion. There wouldn't be a motion for that. If you don't agree, just, if you don't agree with taking it back and having it be a Brown Act body, then it will just default to staff recommendation, which does not require, excuse me, does not require action at this time.
Okay. All right. So, any further comments from board members? Everyone's had a chance to speak. We do have a motion on the floor, that is to continue and to bring this back in the Brown Act format. Please vote.
And the motion fails with Supervisor Kennedy, Desmond, and Frost voting against it.
Okey-dokey. Very good. All right. We'll move on from this item. We do have one other item. We thank our folks who've been in the audience on the item continued from yesterday, so we'll move to the last item besides appointments for the day, so go ahead.
Second to the last item.
Yeah, second to the last.
Item seven, approval to establish a new fee structure in line with the revision set forth in Section 26190 of the California Penal Code for concealed weapons permit processing fees as required by California State Assembly Bill 1297.
You got to hear about a lot of other stuff besides what you were here to present on, so.
I did, Chair, but it was, it was very interesting. It's a lot of good discussion.
Yeah, thanks for being with us.
It goes on in here.
Okay, go ahead.
Of course, sir.
Yeah. So, you're back, and I guess being want to summarize, since we kind of tasked you with coming back as relates to cost recovery and so forth, so I don't know if you wanted to summarize that in your verbal comments?
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
So, basically, before we went anywhere near adjusting the fees, we had county council review the language in the applicable penal codes to get a little clearer interpretation and to make sure that our interpretation as an agency was in alignment with theirs. And basically, county council's opinion is, we cannot stack fees that are not applicable to the process. So, in this instance, the board asked us, the only way to do a full cost recovery would be for us to go outside of what the actual time and cost associated with that time it takes to process a new application fee, and then take the additional time and cost it takes to process renewals and modifications, and stack those costs all onto the new application fee. So, basically, the answer is, we cannot, at least county council's interpretation is, we cannot add those fees, knowing that this cost study was accomplished and that we were very specifically associating the fees with the particular processes. In addition, we're chained to the other language in the penal code, which discusses what we can charge for the modification and the renewal fees. On top of all of that, with the application fees is, the CCW process in and of itself is, there is an initial application fee, which is 20% of whatever the fee we're charging in the moment. There's cases on a fairly regular basis where the applicant fails. So, while the time may be exactly or close to equal what it would take for somebody whose application was approved, and the costs incurred with that, we would not recoup any of the monies other than the initial 20% that we collected. So, there's just, there's a lot of moving parts to it that make it really difficult to do as the board directed and try to figure out how to get to a full cost recovery.
Okay. Thank you for that. County councils, you want to weigh in at all on this? She summarized it, but just.
Yeah, I think she summarized it appropriately and accurately, based on our research and the nature of the new permits versus the renewals, and the last part is also very key as to how we aren't able to really recoup all of the costs.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Kennedy?
Not disagreeing with anything that's been said, I just don't understand it. So, just for some clarification, so the 20% is the most we could charge if the person fails for an application fee, is that what you said?
Well, what, the way it's structured is, you can collect 20% of the fees upfront on a new applicant.
Okay.
So, when you initiate the process to get your CCW.
20% of the three?
Of the entirety of the fee.
That's the most that you can charge for an application?
On a, on a new applicant, yes.
Is that because it's penal code? I mean, that's specifically in penal code? I mean, because, I mean, we, I won't use the word arbitrary, but we, you know, have different application fees for different departments and all that. Is that because this is specifically housed within this particular?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond?
So, really, the only way, thank you, Mr. Chair, the only way we would be able to realize full cost recovery is if there was some kind of legislative change, right? Is that?
Yes.
The position of?
Which is kind of ironic, because there was a legislative change.
Yeah, that's what they were striving for.
It didn't really work.
Yeah, that wasn't the legislative intent.
Right.
Right.
That needs to change, because I, full cost recovery is extremely important in this context and in so many others, so.
Right. So, I mean, that's something we could add to the list of things to explain.
Our legislative agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? All right. So, if there are none, then we have before us, the staff report with additional information that was proposed last, last week when we put this over. Just one question, so we, so we fall about $125,000 short of full cost recovery, is that accurate?
It's an average. So, again, because there's a lot of factors, we can't predict. For example, if all of a sudden, we had a year where we had very few new applicants, which is where we're actually.
Yeah.
Recouping the costs, and we have a ton of renewals and modifications, it could tip it a little bit, but it's a fairly, and Jennifer can probably speak to this more if you need a more thorough explanation, but there's just, there's a lot of.
Some variables, and you've explained that. How many CCW permits are currently active in Sacramento County?
As of the end of June, we're right about 10,400, give or take a few.
Okay.
Is that a lot?
It depends on who you want to compare to. So, I actually have just some overview numbers of some other counties, if you're interested. Sure. So, Placer, and this is like by no means an expert collection of things, this is just my CCW staff using internal contacts to get some general figures to give to you.
Hopefully, they're, it's based on population, I hope.
I don't understand the question.
I'll do some math up here. Per capita.
Sorry, Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive, these are total numbers, right?
That's not going to be very informative.
Regardless of their population that you're going to give us?
Yeah.
The total numbers?
Yes. My understanding is they, these statistics are reflected the same way we collect them, which is, when I tell you there's 10,400 and some odd current active CCW holders, that is the number for Sacramento County.
Yeah, but, but the point, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, what you're going to recite, if it's just the total per county, is not, at least for me, does not inform me on the. on the.
Agreed. I'm still curious.
You know, on the, on the comparative level of permits unless it is per capita, because that's the equalizing denominator, numerator, whatever it is, so that we can have a better comparison. So if you were to compare us to Alpine County, which has 1,200 people, we have a million and a half, and you tell me, well, you know, they have, you know, three people that got concealed weapon permits, the math is going to, you know, tell a very different story. So then if you just relied on telling us the total figure, does that make sense?
It does. I guess what we were thinking is that at least based on the size of the county, it gives you a ballpark of how we compare. So for example.
No, no, we can, we can infer. I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to, I think you were just going to start with Placer, right?
I was, but I mean, certainly we can calculate this out.
No, no, but, but my point is, is yes, we can infer that if a Placer does not have a million and a half residents, you're going to give us a number, it's a total number, I'm going to guess it's going to be a lower figure than us in terms of the total comparable, but it really doesn't tell the whole story until you, until you tell me how many people are in Placer County. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah.
So if that's what you want, though, I cannot do that.
416, 326.
Okay. All right, so give us the numbers.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Thanks. Go ahead.
Okay, so yes, you would like to?
Yeah, absolutely. Everybody's curious here.
So Placer County sits at 7,600, Amador 2,500.
How many, how many folks in Amador?
Three.
I apologize for creating so much work for you. Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. El Dorado is at 3,800, Solano's at 3,000. And then when we look at some of the larger counties, Riverside sits at 18,000, Orange County is at 17,000, Fresno County is at 14,000, Kern is 11,000, and then Sonoma is at 1,000.
Do you have Alameda?
Uh, no.
How about San Francisco?
No.
Okay.
That's interesting.
We're, this is based on the contacts we have, that we have either worked with or have somebody in that office that we can call, so it wasn't intended?
Yeah, no, I understand, but of the counties that you cited, many of them are rural counties. And I'm suspecting, and some, you know, some are not, Riverside has both rural and urban, but one of the surrogates that we use a lot to compare ourselves to, meaning the county for a lot of different purposes, population-wise, include Contra Costa, Alameda, they're urban, they're urban counties. So that, that's what I would look to in terms of trying to find a per capita number for those particular counties as an apples to apples.
Absolutely, sir.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for sharing that information, though. Again, that's, you know, I think it's illustrious, though, obviously, of those counties that, you know, you had information on, and you could certainly, I guess, reach out to all 58 counties and see what they did. That's not, we're not tasking with that, but unless that's with somebody's request, so. All right, any other questions about that? Yeah, I'm sorry, Phil.
No, no questions, thank you. Appreciate it. I just want to be clear, I'm going to vote no on this, but I want to be clear as to why. It's largely a protest vote because I just don't believe in the, philosophically, I just don't believe in the practice of liberally issuing, carry concealed weapon permits as much as we do here in Sacramento County. And I understand, you know, through the legislation and penal code amendment or the applicable penal code here, I get what, what the legislation was attempting to do, but as was kind of alluded to by County Council and some of my colleagues, it's imperfect, I think, at this point, and so I'm really going to be voting no because I just don't think that if we, especially if we can't really generally cost recover for something like this, it's definitely not anything I can support.
Thank you. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you. I do not disagree with anything Supervisor Serna said. I think he and I have been on the same page of this issue for quite some time. I will be voting yes, just because I want to raise the fees, but I also fully intend to re-approach our assembly members and see if we can get this thing fixed, so.
Okay. All right. Do we have any public comments on this item, Flo?
We do not.
Okay, no incentive in the chambers, so entertain a motion.
On approval.
Okay. Chair would second it, approve the recommendation as outlined with the change in the fee for this item, linking it to the CPI, I believe. All right, if there's nothing further, then please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Serna recording a no vote.
Great. Thank you for staying all afternoon long. We can't, we didn't get a chance to talk, so.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, thank you very much. Take care. Okay, down to our appointments, and then we'll get to closure here.
Okay, so for your appointments, let me know when you're ready.
Okay, our nominations, excuse me.
Ready? Okay. All right. You are continuing to July 12th. The Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board continuing to July 26th. The Building Board of Appeals, Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Public Health Advisory Board, Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Sacramento Environmental Commission, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first item is the Assessment Appeals Board.
Chiefs of Staff recommend nominating Lawrence Myers and continuing the remainder to August the 9th.
Civil Service Commission.
That's District 5.
Yes.
Yeah, would nominate for reappointment Bruce Nelson.
Okay. We have the Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council.
Would continue that to August the 9th.
Okay. And Disability Advisory Commission?
Chief of Staff recommend reappointing Carol Moss, Angela Talent, Kathy Sechen, and then continuing the remainder to August the 9th.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to July 26th.
And Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board.
I know that Supervisor Kennedy weighed in on this, and I think he does, he's punched in again on this. The Chiefs of Staff do recommend, though, continue to July 12th, so Patrick, I'll.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate that. Kind of new territory for my eight years or seven-plus years in, when this happens, but, you know, again, I want to show respect for the process, I want to show respect for the Chiefs of Staff, but we keep continuing this item when we have an applicant who, you know, used to run, was the general manager of the $7 billion Los Angeles Retirement Fund, you know, and we keep continuing, continuing, and continuing it, you know, I'd like at some point to have a, if it's the board's desire not to appoint Mr. Aguado, then, you know, we need to vote on this. It's just, I just, I'm a little bit dismayed at the way that we're treating this applicant who is clearly qualified, so. And like I said, I mean, this is new territory, I've never had this happen with appointments, we usually go along with the Chiefs, but I just want to protest the recommendation at this time.
Well, and maybe we can just parse it, you know, we're talking about three weeks here, but we certainly, I think, respecting, obviously, your comments, and obviously there has been, I think there's been an interview conducted, so maybe during the recess, we can have, you know, as you asked us, I think, I certainly have looked at the application, and you requested of your colleagues last week, so unless there's any disagreement, I would support continuing, but I think to your point, expect that on July 12th, we would take this up.
I appreciate that.
For consideration.
That's fair, thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, next. Do you want to hold that, hold that to July 12th?
Yeah, no, I was just making a note of that you're expecting a nomination, though, on the 12th, correct?
That's on the board to do that, yeah.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board?
Please continue to July 26th.
Okay.
And are you amenable to that for the other two? Those aren't district-specific. There's two other seats.
Oh, there's two other seats?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Are you okay with going to July 26th?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't have it in my notes, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Sacramento County Youth Commission?
Mr. Desmond.
Please continue to July 12th.
Got it. Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
All right. Well, very good. That takes us to close the business. This is our last session for three weeks, and I know we've had budget and long, two long days, and certainly appreciate my colleagues' patience, certainly Ann and all of our clerk and certainly County Council and everybody who's joined us. Mr. Jones is the last other remaining staff member here with us, but Ann, I don't know if you want to offer some, offer some comments?
I have one thing to say tonight, and I was quite remiss at the end of budget hearings when I gave a huge shout-out and thank you to a whole bunch of people, and I left out our clerk and her staff.
She got 106.
She got all the accolades. She got, she got her money and her staff, yes.
I've never seen taxpayers more eager to spend, for us to spend their money, I mean.
But I think that's indicative of the job that Ms. Evans does every single day and keeps us all on point, and so I just didn't want to leave the end of the fiscal year without commenting on what a great job she does, so thank you, Flo, and I hope you all have a wonderful break.
Thank you, Flo.
Thank you, and it's really the team, the, all of the clerk of the board's team, yeah, they're, they're the ones that make it all go.
Totally agree. It's why I, I forgot which meeting it was, but it was one recent, long, difficult meeting, and I felt compelled to actually post a hearty thank you to you and your staff on social media, so.
Thank you, someone actually took a screenshot of that and sent it to me.
You could, you could use it, whip it out during your review or whatever, so.
Thank you.
You got a fan club, they call in regularly, so.
I know. Thank you.
Okay, Ann, anything else? Okay. All right. Colleagues, anything for the good of the order?
No, thanks for your leadership during the last several weeks.
You bet. Well, and thanks to all of you, we're going to, time we come back, we'll be rounding the corner and heading towards the latter half of 2022, but it's been a good year thus far. Thank you all for your good work and time spent here, and I wish you all a restful couple of weeks, and we'll see you back in these chambers on July the 12th, 9:30, bright and early. Thanks, we're done.